I do now.
Okay, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 column 4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Chairman Iraquen.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
President.
Here.
Start up the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its will. The glory be to the Lord.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has anything to be brought to the score that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. Two cases on the seven o'clock meeting. Application 2136, Andreas Karan Zikos, 228 Hiawatha Boulevard, C-Variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling. Come on forward.
Sir, you're raising, are both of you going to testify?
Yes.
You raise your right hand, excuse me, swear of firm testimony about to give before the board is true self you got?
Yes.
And you have professionals?
Yes.
Engineer.
And you're the engineer, you're going to provide testimony as well?
Yes.
Sir, you raise your right hand, you swear of firm testimony about to give before the board is true self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. Jeff Garian E.G.A.R.I.A.N. This is address 67146, Garrett, Dill, Jersey.
And you're a licensed engineer.
My license is pending. I testified before this board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cameron, the witness and the expert witnesses are sworn. You can have a seat. Thank you.
Okay, so you're looking for a front yard setback, side yard setback for the generator and the AC units, rear yard setback for the deck stairs, yards and courts, open decks, building coverage and impervious coverage. You have a lot in the R4 zone on Hiawatha Boulevard, and it looks like your lot is 60 by 100. You've got a standard lot.
Correct.
Want to begin the testimony?
Uh, sure. Yes, standing, sitting, does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, perfect. Um, well, thank you. Good evening. Um, my name's Andreas, and, uh, my wife is behind me there, and we're newlyweds. And, um, we, uh, we're from Parsippany. We went to grade school, um, high school, and we just love this town, and we love Parsippany. And, um, all our family and friends are in Parsippany. And, uh, we want to continue to live in Parsippany. We want to raise our family in Parsippany. And, um, in order to accomplish this, we want to be able to build the proposed house in order to have, um, my mother, my elderly mother, live with us, and, um, her father live with us as well. And, uh, this is why we're asking for these specific, um, changes, um, for access and convenience. And, uh, we want to continue to raise our family in Parsippany for generations to come. And we just love this town. So, we're asking for access and grant access for this.
So you're asking for a front yard setback of, um...
Quarter lot.
Quarter lot, thank you. That answers that question. Okay. So it's just on the Roosevelt Avenue side that you're looking for a variance, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Is there a house there now?
I'm sorry?
Is there a house there now?
Yes, there is.
The, I'm sorry, the existing conditions on the right side of the sheet shows the existing dwelling and all the existing, uh, setbacks. And then on the right side of the sheet is the proposed.
I don't seem to have all that information, though.
Do we get those sheets?
Do we have that sheet?
No.
Did you file that document?
This was the plan that we've had.
Yeah.
This was what he submitted.
Did you get that plan?
No, I don't have that plan. Probably to the zoning department.
I did, I did file it with the zoning, the proper channels, yes.
Why don't we just mark it?
I'm A1.
So, what are the current setbacks of the house that's there?
The, um, it's a conforming, it's a conforming front yard setback on Hiawatha. It's a, um, it's an improvement to the existing front yard setback on Roosevelt. The existing setback on Roosevelt is 9.1, and the proposed setback on Roosevelt for the new dwelling, uh, is 14.6. It was an improvement on that, on that front yard, and it conforms on the Hiawatha Boulevard. For front yard setback.
And the other side, you're only looking for a setback for the air conditioner and the generator, is that correct?
Yes.
On A1, what's the date of that? If you could...
The date of this plan?
Yes.
It's, uh, November 23rd, 2020, last revised June 29th, 2021.
Thank you.
Maybe we ask, the house itself will be multi-generational, you and your wife and, and...
Two elderly.
Two elderly.
Yes, correct.
Is this going to be an apartment in there?
No.
Or it's just bedrooms and space for them to live?
Exactly.
You want to testify? Come on up and get sworn in, okay?
How many bedrooms do you have?
Look, you're welcome to come up. I can't have you talking from back there, okay?
Come on.
How many bedrooms are you planning? Swear her in, okay? Please.
Ma'am, could you, uh, raise your right hand, you swear of firm testimony about to give before the board is true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. Nita Patel. It's N.I.T.A., Lanting Patel, P.A.T.E.L.
Sit down.
The square, square footage of the house will be what?
Um...
I've got it on the chart here, 1,924 square feet.
Yes, correct.
That's the footprint, so do we double that?
No.
The second, the second floor is not going to be the same as the first floor?
No, no, it's not. It's smaller.
Right.
Okay.
I think the total is like 3,000, correct, with the second floor?
What is the, what is the building, um, coverage right now? Do you know?
Yes. The existing building coverage, so it's 16.4%.
It's really small.
I mean, I assume the existing home is two-bedroom, small?
It is, yes.
So much tripling it.
So what?
Single, single-story, um...
Bungalow.
Yeah, basically. It's a whole, like, person, big bungalow.
What kind of new construction is on this street? The north, number of homes been...
There's been at least four homes.
Yeah, there's been several homes that have been...
On Upper Hiawatha Boulevard.
If I was, um, and I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I know this area very well, and I'm trying to picture which corner it's on. If I was traveling north on Roosevelt Avenue...
Yes.
And I got to Hiawatha Boulevard, what corner would it be on?
It would be on the...
The left.
The far left, so the northwestern corner of that...
Okay, and is that like a white, um...
No.
No.
The, the white one is directly across the street from our house?
It's base, it's, it's...
I'm going north, it's on the left-hand side.
It's on the left-hand side, the, the diagonal corner, right. Of that, and the other side is the white house that I believe you referenced it to, which was a relatively newer house as well, built in the past few years.
No, I'm, what I'm thinking of is, it's a very, very old house that originally had three lots, and they subdivided the three, the three lots. That's the house I'm thinking about.
I'd not...
That's not it?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I grew up in that neighborhood as well, so I'm very familiar with the sound of it.
Yeah. Well, I just, I was on that road today, matter of fact, so...
What's, what's on the left-hand side? The right side is Roosevelt. What's on the left-hand side of the house?
That's...
It's another house?
Another house, yes, correct.
Approximately the same.
Yeah, so we begin the street on the upper Hiawatha that continues with a number of houses ahead of ours.
Similar to the house that you're going to, you're proposing to knock down?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, yeah, there's, there are new houses right across the street, I think they're fairly large also.
Yeah.
Yes, and, yeah, there's currently some being built as well.
There was a subdivision, I would say there was a subdivision across the street.
The house to the right of us is the size of our current home, and then one house over to that is larger, and then this house is going up a little bit. So I think we're kind of like, you, that are still small.
How does, how does, oh, never mind, never mind, I answered that question already.
The, you show a proposed generator pad. I don't think you can put that pad there. I think you're supposed to be, you're going to have windows on that side of the house someplace. And I know they have to be certain distance from the windows, and they also have to be certain distance from the building.
We'll probably have to relocate the generator to the rear, that likely is five feet from the house for...
I don't know, I, it, I know it goes by the size of the generator and the, I, I just tucked up here. You're going to need another variance to put it someplace, that's the problem. You've got a shed in the back there, little shed?
Yes.
I don't know what... I'm, I'm making, asking these questions because if the board approves this plan or something like it, you don't want to come back here, right?
Yeah. We all... We have...
Because that, that generator will not pass construction where it's shown now.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's a gas generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what we can do is we can move the...
Why don't we just do this? Why don't we just take the generator pad? Well, we, we need to keep it because it's part of coverage, so it's part of the variance, but we don't know where it's going to end up. Okay.
We just quickly discussed possibly removing the shed and then putting the generator in the, generator in the rear yard.
It just makes sense.
Form in that location.
Yeah.
And then we reduce the 36% of our overall coverage.
Yep. As the house faces Hiawatha Boulevard, is it that front of your house in line with the other houses?
It is.
Yeah.
They don't need variance for that one.
No, I just want to make sure that it's...
Whose, whose fences are these going around the property? Yours, your neighbors?
It's ours.
They, they are yours?
Yes.
Good condition?
I'm sorry?
Good, good condition?
I mean, they were there when we purchased the house, uh, in the early, early, early 90s, but they're in good condition, yes.
Okay. So the big issue that I see is the building coverage is 35% on, on a conforming lot. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Back to one question I don't want to answer. How many bedrooms is it going to, you're planning?
It's going to be four.
Four bedrooms.
They're all upstairs?
No, three are upstairs, one downstairs, four is the other.
Okay. How many bathrooms?
Uh, two, two and a half.
No. Three and a half.
Three and a half bathrooms?
So on the impervious coverage, any issues do we see, or there's been any comments about water problems?
Well, I think any variance that we granted is going to have to be, um...
You were proposing, you were saying in the front yard, the roof leaders. Um, it is very minimal grading on the project, the yard is essentially flat, uh, so...
No, no.
And we are on the diagonal side of the neighboring property on Hiawatha. We don't have any...
So the water from the back is going draining to the front into the sea, uh, the eepage tank?
All the roof leaders are, are connected to the seepage tank.
Okay.
And the driveway is just going to just go out to the Hiawatha Boulevard. But is it different for...
And the rest of the lot will kind of go towards the streets, wondering...
And the, the deck, what is the deck going to be made of?
Uh, just a regular, standard deck.
Space between them?
Yes.
Are these going to be, will be elevated because of steps there?
Yeah, it's going to match the finished floor, uh, closing three steps down to the grade.
Any other questions by the board?
I got a couple. Um, maybe this, you know, Mr. Chadwick can answer this. On the right side, along Roosevelt Ave, where it says block curb, you see that double line that goes south, bends to the left, cuts across the driveway, goes to the...
That's a contour line.
Thank you. Okay. Um, on the, towards the top of the page, it says proposed six-foot vinyl fence. I don't see that it drops when it gets to the small portion in the front.
It's connecting to the front corner of the dwelling.
Does it have to drop to below six feet at that front?
No, it stops.
It just stops? There's nothing that cuts across that goes parallel to Hiawatha?
Yeah, it's, it's running parallel along the side property line and then that degree is right to the front.
And my question is, does it have to go below? Is that considered a front yard? Does it have to go below the six feet?
No.
Okay.
Well, he's got, he can see the proposed gate, so he's tied into the corner, the porch is actually forward of the fence.
Okay, and then the fence in the top right, looks like it might cut across diagonally to the house.
I didn't follow you on that, then.
Top right, the top right corner of the house is, if I'm reading this correctly, the fence goes along the backyard, then cuts down to the corner of the house, the right top corner.
I don't see that.
Trying to figure out where the fence is...
I think that's a dimension line. It says 20.1 next to it.
Uh, no, like, um, so I'm following the X's of the fence along the top, and then it looks like where it says 285, 286, it looks like the fence might cut down towards the corner of the house. See how there's an X on the corner of the house?
That's, yeah, that's a dimension line.
Okay. So where does the fence go in the backyard? Does it just stop? Does it come down at all?
It's going to, it's just going to run power, it's going to run along the back portion of the, um, of the design, along the rear property line, and then essentially connect to the existing fence that's there.
Is that going to be six feet along Roosevelt Avenue?
No, we're not proposing any of the fence along Roosevelt Avenue.
So it just stops? There's nothing on the side?
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, is there an existing fence on Roosevelt?
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, it's an existing chain link.
It's in the street?
Yes.
It's not, well, it's right next to the curb, near it right away.
Well, it's beyond your property.
Yes.
Should we fix that?
That fence has been there, is that, is that fence in good shape?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how high is it?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Yeah.
So it conforms to that.
Any other questions over here on the left?
No.
Any questions on the right? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness, these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? Questions? Any questions? I don't see any questions. Um, is that your case? That's everything?
Um, yeah, I would just like to point out that, you know, then again, we are proposing, uh, you were saying to the roof leaders, uh, again, it's not going to have negative impact on the adjacent properties for stormwater. Um, you know, obviously with the increase in previous coverage, stormwater is the question mark, uh, just what, so obviously demonstrating that, um, you know, we're having, uh, a positive effect on the, on the, on the lot with respect to the stormwater, um...
There are, there are significant, well, there's a lot of houses in, like Hiawatha that have gone through a regentrification, lots that have gone through regentrification.
Yeah.
So it's not going to match every house, that's correct, in the neighborhood, but there are more and more houses like it.
There's more house, I would say that this house is becoming more of the dinosaur than, than, than the houses that they're proposing.
Yeah, a 965-square-foot house really is not, not viable anymore. It's just not viable.
947.
That's it, you know?
There are some, like, some other brand, more branded houses that, as you get closer towards Frederick Road, that would, I would imagine, would be similar to this sort of construction on Hiawatha.
There's at least six houses on Upper Hiawatha that are...
The only thing I, and I want to say is that there's, um, in all the houses that we approve for variances, most of them are 40 by 100 lots, which is not a conforming lot in your zone. You have a conforming lot, so we're going to have to dig deep and say, is this really, you know, the size of the footprint that you want to build is, you know, real. So, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, outside of the fact that we want our elderly parents to live with us, just to be able to, to be close to home?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we want to keep it all in the same area, and so, you know, that's why our vision is this, and this is why we want to ask the things that we're asking for...
Yeah.
For logical reasons more than anything else.
Have you discussed this project at all with your, uh, nearby neighbors?
Oh, yes, we have, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Do we need to go into conference?
I think we should.
Motion to go into conference?
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who's going to start?
I will. I like it. I think you have a young family that's, look, who are originally from town and wants to stay in town, that take care of elderly parents. I'm sure they're hopefully looking to have kids and keep their roots here. Uh, it's an improvement from what's there, which is a continuing trend. I think my one concern was the water. I thought it was sufficiently addressed, so I think I'll be voting for it, and I recommend my colleagues do so.
Ready?
Yes. Uh, I'm the similar note, I'm also in favor of this one, since this, uh, property is in the corner lot, and it has two side yards, and, uh, to the size of the family and the elders, and, uh, this is a reasonable request, I'm in favor of.
Mr. Pareek?
Yes, uh, I had a little concern about the building coverage and impervious coverage, but looking at the neighborhood and, uh, the trend in the neighborhood, I would say it's keeping up with the, you know, character of the neighborhood, so I will vote yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
I appreciate, appreciate the applicants wanting to improve the, uh, condition of the property. Certainly appreciate the fact that they, you know, want to remain in Parsippany, bring their family to live with them, and I, and I think, you know, this board, when possible, should try and facilitate that. Obviously, we have competing interests here, you know, we want to, you know, achieve these goals, but also preserve, you know, the, the zoning ordinances that are in effect and the, the factor of the neighborhood, and, you know, hearing that this is the direction that the neighborhood is going, and, and we're blowing through impervious coverage and building coverage, and it, it concerns me. Um, and I would have liked to have seen or heard some, uh, attempt at compromise, see if we could shrink anything, um, you know, enough people on the board express concern about the size of the building coverage, um, and, and I think we, as a board, have to be careful with the number of applications that are coming through where we are just, you know, not addressing, and I, and we certainly do as a board, address a lot of impervious coverage and building coverages by shrinking things, shrinking the applications, but I don't, I don't want to just rubber stamp this one. It's, it's a conforming lot, that's concerning to me, and, and I don't know that we need to be this aggressive with the size. With all due respect to the, you know, applicant's intentions and, you know, reasons for wanting this lot, for sure.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Um, excuse me. When I first looked at this, I always thought the house is going to be too big for the lot. Uh, there's really very little yard space. Uh, but looking at the, uh, zoning data chart, uh, other than the, uh, previous coverage, they're improving a lot, as far as the front yard setback on Roosevelt, uh, and also, uh, the size of the driveway. Um, we have a, a deck that's, uh, going to be, uh, not really affect the, the lot coverage too much. They agreed to move the, uh, uh, generator pad and remove the shed, and that should help a little with the coverage also. And based upon their testimony that they're, uh, they're trying to have a multi-generational house, take care of their parents, and stay in Parsippany, I, I think, uh, that's sufficient for me to vote in favor.
It's a close call, but I, I, I recognize that this area is changing, and the fact that you're providing for, uh, ample runoff from your downspouts, even though it's adding a little bit of impervious coverage, um, I think you're going to be able to control the, um, uh, the wa, the water coming off the roof. The deck will be per, some semi-pervious in that there will be some rainwater going through the slots. Um, I'm not sure if we need to, to in any way engage, uh, the town engineer, or...
That's always put in the resolution.
Okay.
So if the engineer does come out with any concern on drainage, it would be a requirement that you comply with their findings.
We, we have no, that's, that's administration, that's the town, that's not us, okay?
Okay.
Uh, we just grant variances. I will be voting in favor of it. Uh, motion to come out of conference?
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Someone like to, uh, frame a resolution?
Sure. Application 21 column 36, Andreas Karan Zikos, 228 Hiawatha Boulevard, block 592, lot 9, zone R4, recommend granting a C-Variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling, roofed, engine sway, porch, shed, open deck with stairs, generator, air conditioning units, and six-foot-high fence, contrary to sections 430, 430-35, columns 4, 8, 9, 10, and 13, sections 430-10I, and that you will agree with whatever the, uh, town engineer says needs to be done for the water.
And we're moving the generator and eliminating the shed. Did you say that?
No, I did not.
Move, moving the generator, eliminating the shed. Okay?
And no second kitchen.
And no second kitchen, okay. Uh, do we have a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Joskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
No.
Pareek.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Iraquen.
Yes. Results of the variances granted. We will memorialize this probably in two weeks, in two weeks, and then you'll be free to proceed. Thank you. Good luck. Are you, are you living in the house now, or?
Yes.
Oh, God.
I'm his mom.
Well, I guess you're uh not gonna be living there for a while, huh? Now, you don't wanna live in a house that's under construction anyway, even if it's even if it's ten percent of the house. All right, good night, guys.
Good luck.
All right, case uh application twenty-one forty-seven, M three Capital LLC, Seventy Holland Road, block three eighty-five, C variance to construct a new, single-family dwelling with attached garage, balconies, rear patio, stairs, and necessary retaining walls. Major soil. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty, fifty-four Main Street, Chatham, New Jersey. On behalf of the applicant, I have the principal of the applicant sitting next to me on the left. This is Mr. Rienzo, M three Capital LLC. And to my right is Mr. Frederick C. Miola, who will be our engineer testifying this evening. If I could have them both sworn in, please.
Gentlemen, you can step. You swear a firm testimony about to provide the board's true self, you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state your name, sir?
Max Rey L S O.
How do you spell that?
R E Y and L S O.
And you are the principal of um M three Capital. You'll be providing factual testimony. Mr. Miola, you're engineer?
Yep.
And all your licenses are still full force since last week?
Haven't gotten any letters from them.
Have you been qualified before this board and other boards? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just qualified and sworn.
Mr. Miola, I heard a rumor that you're retiring.
I'm trying to.
You're trying to, okay.
Part of my deal was I was gonna take care of all the projects that I had before the board now.
Right.
That was probably a mistake because they keep getting back on. But sooner or later, I'm gonna get to the last application and I'm gonna move out and get drunk.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're here tonight asking the board for three variances. I noticed for four, just out of the abundance of caution, based on the zoning letter that we had received. Um but it's our opinion, and Mr. Miola will testify to it, that we are not a three-story house. We are a two, two-and-a-half story at the most. Um it's just a matter of the steep grades on the property. But the three variances we're asking the board to consider tonight is minimum lot size. Uh we're in the R four zone, six thousand feet is required. We're pre-existing um in condition, we only have five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three square feet. Um the maximum building coverage is twenty, we're at twenty-three point twenty-three. And Mr. Miola will testify again, these are all.
Did you repeat that number?
Yeah, we have a different number.
You have a different number?
We're looking at twenty-eight point two-five.
Twenty-eight point two-five.
It's in the zoning, zoning.
Try to double check your number. Make sure the last three guys plan. Mr. Miola, the plans you have and the board members should have is August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, correct?
Yep.
There was lots of shaving and going back and forth and just having Mr. Miola double check his number. And then the third one was.
You said the last plan was August twenty-third?
Twenty-twenty-one.
We're looking at June eighteen on this one. Is that what everyone else has?
That was a filed date.
So it was obviously before that.
Anything changed, Fred?
There's three revisions after that.
Smaller here?
The size?
Size got smaller?
No, the twenty-eight, twenty-five is what I'm showing, I'm just double checking the number myself.
This one is?
June fourth is what it's doing here.
I got a twenty-three. Twenty-three, which is what is quoted. And the variance plan says the number is twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight is what we have. We have a building, principal building of one thousand five hundred and seventy-four square feet. On the last, it's five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three.
The plans didn't catch up with the zoning.
Well, just to be clear, I did notice for the large number, the twenty-eight point two-five percent on the um on the maximum building uh coverage and then on the maximum impervious coverage, we noticed for the fifty-four point nine-two percent.
Okay. Did the architectural plans change?
No, no. The only plans that had changed was Mr. Miola's in dealing with uh questions and concerns from uh Jennifer over in zoning as far as calculations and corrections on the plans. So.
Okay, Kelsey, again, could you go over the proposed is for building coverage from twenty-eight, twenty-five to?
Right, twenty to twenty-eight point two-five percent.
Okay, and uh impervious coverage uh from proposed fifty-four, nine-two to what?
Fifty, we're at fifty-four point nine-two.
Fifty-four point nine-two.
Okay.
And and the notice you said was for the figures you just quoted?
Correct, I'm looking at the notices that we did. I was there on the worst-case scenario side, so we noticed for the twenty-eight point two-five and the fifty-four point nine-two.
So the plans are right, but the numbers on the bottom of the plans are wrong? Is that what we're saying?
No.
No?
Whatever Fred did to this, he increased the impervious.
Okay.
By about five percent.
Right, it's what's wrong is this was submitted on a much earlier.
Okay.
Plan. If you would look at.
Put on this.
What was attached to the zoning officer's stuff, the the last page has the correct numbers. It's the twenty-eight point two-five and the fifty-four point nine-two, correct? Right, so you do have the correct information, the plan is incorrect, I shouldn't have included it with it.
The plan's outdated is what it is. The plan that's attached to the zoning officer's report is.
Correct.
Like, is that the correct one?
The scale, yeah. The zoning officer has the um scale from the correct one, I believe. Cause that has the right numbers.
You're looking at plans from this first emission, I probably should have gotten rid of them.
The one we have attached to Jeff's report is, there's no date on that. And I'm looking at the plan that was filed in June and the attachment to the zoning officer's report, and I can't find any difference. Fred, what happened? Did the coverage get more?
It it didn't get more, Fred, just go through your revisions that you did after zoning. There was.
Was the twenty-three, three miscalculation, is that what it was?
Right, there was an initial submission submitted that was a miscalculation before Jennifer um had reviewed the plan when they. And then when Jennifer submitted the plan, Mr. Miola updated them to correctly also calculate all the stoops and the steps and.
Got it.
All the stairs and everything properly, and then that was corrected. Fred, can you um explain to the board the nature of the variances and and why the condition of the existing condition of the lot is is really driving the majority, if not all, of the variances except for the lot size itself?
Yeah, I I took the liberty on this project to draw a profile. I I cut a profile right through the driveway that shown existing and proposed profile photography, so you can get a feeling for this lot. The solid line is the ground conditions that are out here today. And then the dash line are the driveway and then you got the two floors of the building and the ground. So you can see because of the hill, this house is cut into the hill. At the back of the first floor, there's a little small flat area, then it steps up again where there's a larger patio. Because of the topography out here, it was very difficult to get a flat outdoor area for the ultimate purchaser. So he had at least a place to sit, he wanted to in the spring and in the summer in the nice weather. So the the grades are such that we're cutting it into the hill and then we're gonna have to have walls around the patio to hold up the ground on either side of it.
And then Fred also submitted as part of the application, the architect did a similar profile.
Sure.
That shows the hill and the house that might be a little more aesthetically easier to follow with Fred's profile.
Is that submitted?
Yes, that's part of the application, it's be attached to it.
Oh, cool.
If you want, I can mark it as submitted if you would like.
It's a separate piece of paper?
Yes.
Paper.
No?
Have a floor plan on the front.
Okay, all right. Back there, okay.
So this probably dropped about thirty-five feet from back to front.
Yeah.
Your 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 solid line gets to the street or no?
My solid line starts at the street and goes to the back of the property.
Okay, so you're about thirty-five foot in the topography?
Yes.
It is steep.
Yeah, it's 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 a tough lot.
What's your driveway grade though?
Uh the driveway grade, I think, is relatively flat. Looks like it's about three thirty-one, three thirty-two at the street and the garage is at three thirty-four, so it's about two feet.
There's nothing.
No, it's it's about a six, eight percent grade.
Is there any way we can cut down the size of that patio in the back? Maybe make that like sixteen by twenty? Reduce some of the impervious coverage?
Sure.
Does it have to be across the whole back of the house?
From my standpoint as the engineer, I can cut it down. I'm inclined to say yes.
Would you grade this property? Are you gonna need more retaining walls for all the sides of this lot together?
Yes, we're gonna have to have walls, especially on the.
If you look at the outs, on the right side, you're gonna have to, you gotta, do you need retaining walls on the?
Yes. We're using.
Do we know how high the retaining walls are gonna be?
Mr. Chairman.
Does the town, the towns get the rule, what is it? No, it's less than that.
Or?
Or? I think it's three feet in it.
Maybe Mr. Holland knows? Yeah, the uh the numbers that are penciled in are pretty accurate, I was looking at the elevation that. So where it says the five-foot-one foot height of the upper left-hand corner and the three-foot height in upper right-hand corner, the two-and-a-half foot difference at the driveway. And there's a question about the wall along the right side. This is the type of construction that's so close to the property line. And I don't see where the elevations are. Says top of the wall, back of the, bottom of the wall, three thirty-two at the one end. But I don't see what the, where the wall stops, what the wall elevation is at the other end.
Yeah, at the street you hit, he's, looks like he's setting the three thirty-two congete.
Elevation.
But the other section by the platform, I don't know what that elevation would be, the height of the wall would be.
Yeah. They're they're basically, the architect's basically using the garage wall, the retaining wall. So when you get to the back of the garage, it's almost an entirely buried garage. Approximately eight feet of garage wall that's now buried in the ground because of the hills, because the ground keeps climbing. Cause if you look at the elevations in that back corner, it's around three forty-four and the garage floor is three thirty-four. So you know, this this house is tucked into the hill and they're using the foundation as much as possible to hold up, hold back the soil.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, the applicant would be willing to reduce the rear patio to sixteen by twenty as suggested.
Okay, so that knocks off um that locks off seventeen. Wait a minute, oh, knocks off fourteen by fifteen. That's uh approximately two hundred square feet, that's about four percent. Four park. So that brings us down a touch.
It's down around fifty percent.
No, fifty percent.
Yeah, I got.
You know, I'm just.
I backed quickly, three point six percent.
All right, and um the the there's no residential property behind this, this backs onto the Parsippany Road, right?
Backs up the Parsippany Road, all those.
There's a house next door to it?
There is a house on the right, yes.
There's a house on the left?
On the left, it's part of a lot that goes from Holland up Fairfield, up to Parsippany Road, it's one big lot.
So there's no, there's no dwelling on that side?
I don't believe so, I think that's a commercial property.
Okay, and how how are we gonna be able to deal with drainage, Mr. Miola? I would assume that this property drains to the street now, but.
It's gonna drain to the street. We're looking at putting a drywall in the driveway to catch all the roof leaders. And also some of the runoff from the patio.
Is the house to the right lower than the the house being proposed?
Okay, I'm I'm looking at the plan by B N J Engineering, who started the project. I don't see a floor elevation. I see a ground elevation that goes from approximately three thirty-eight in the front to three forty-four in the rear. So it's probably gonna be slightly lower than us, but not by much.
You said three thirty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
In the front?
That's what he said.
That's above you.
Max?
So the house next door actually uh, unfortunately, is actually just gonna be slightly lower. Uh given that the topography of the existing lot, it goes twenty feet in difference in height. So from the street level all the way to the back of the lot, the difference in grade is roughly twenty-three. So what the architect proposed is that we cut actually into the hill to be able to accommodate building the house. So that's why there's the grade difference. So essentially, we're playing with the gray levels to be able to accommodate and make the house look like a normal looking house.
The profile shows that you have a thirty-five foot difference from front to back.
You should, I'm sorry?
The profile says you have a thirty-five foot difference.
Well, from the very street side, all the way to the very end and the ladder at the back, that's about accurate, yes.
But you think in the building area, you have a twenty-foot?
Well, I mean, we're gonna, so from the street level, the house is gonna start out, I believe the street level is like two thirty-two or two thirty-three. And from what I'm thinking, the basement level with the garage level will start around three thirty-five. Now, from there up, there goes the first floor, which goes from three thirty-five to two forty-five, I believe that is. So we're just, again, we're taking, play with the grade to be able to incorporate the house into the hill, effectively using the foundation to act as a retaining walls, if you will, for the soil that's gonna be around the house and the back of it.
Do we have an estimate of how much soil is gonna be removed?
Yes, we do. It's roughly.
Go ahead, come on, go ahead, I don't have to.
In terms of cubic yard, I would think it's about roughly eleven hundred cubic yard of of uh.
One thousand ninety-three is what you're expecting.
One thousand ninety-three and then standard truck has twenty yards?
Approximately twenty yards.
Three hundred yards per day, max.
So we're talking about fifty trucks? Do we know?
That's something that could be sort of reduced, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, obviously bring it in a hundred, hundred yards sort of like traileration that could be accommodated as well. So there is, you know, ways to be a, sort of removal, uh sort of like period that goes on.
And that that thousand was before we cut back on the patio, it would help a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
And um do we know what's this material's gonna be?
Uh we did do uh some uh material testing and it's mostly just regular topsoil and ground soil. And there is some slight bedrock, roughly, if I'm not mistaken, it's about thirty-five feet uh from uh from the top of the hill.
So you have to cut bedrock?
Very, very little.
You have to blast or do you have to?
We don't have to blast, no. So the architect retained, uh an engineer from that they came and they did borings to show what the bedrock is. And it's roughly about thirty-five feet deep to the ground. So essentially, the goal is that the foundation itself would actually rest on top of it. So there is no blasting that will have to be done.
Okay.
And any soil removal?
This ho, this house is a spec house right for sale. This is spec house for sale, right?
It, well, it is, well, the architect actually made that, you know, the design, but this is how I think to live for myself on the.
You're gonna live there?
That's the.
You're building this for yourself?
Yes, I am.
So the the office becomes your business headquarters?
I'm sorry, sir?
He's got an office proposed in the, I guess, the argumentative story on this. When you come in, you park your car in the garage, then you have space to the side of that. That's the office and is that your business office, your plant?
Right, that's really like a home office, and I work from home, so that's more of a home office in the basement.
Right.
So the garage essentially will be considered the basement, but again, this is the proposal. You know, we're gonna, if this is a two-story home, just a given of the topographic of the lot, obviously, it seems like it's because of the elevation. It looks like a three-story, but it really not, because if you look at the actual uh draw line that the architect made, you can see that even most of the first floor, it's very under the soil.
I I could quite, if if you're gonna be living in the house, why is the applicant M three Capital?
Well, initially, when I bought the lot, I wasn't quite sure what I was gonna be doing with it. I I I wanted more as a business uh, you know, position holding. And you know, somebody that my daughter actually got transferred to school, she goes to school in Monville. It's much closer to where we live right now, she goes to school there, so that's why we wanted to build the house initially to move there. Right now, we have to drive my daughter forty-five minutes to school.
To Monville?
To Monville, well, to Monville from where we live right now.
Oh, Monville? Montel?
Vale, Burton County.
Monville.
Oh, Phil, your daughter goes to school in Monville?
In Monville.
And where do you live right now?
I live in uh Woodbridge, in Burton County. She goes to Trinity Christian uh.
That is, that is a height.
So when I was asking about the house to the right being lower, right?
Correct.
So my question is about water runoff to the house on the right?
Well, the water's not gonna run off because I mean, the engineer, I mean, they actually do have an, even adjusted, the town engineer, they did request that a cement that's gonna go in, that's gonna go in the driveway of the uh of the property. So there will be, all the water will basically be contained going to the edge of the cement.
And then, so this is a home office? Your businesses run out of your home?
No, I I actually work for a hedge fund, my wife works for a telephone company. But because of COVID and everything else, we're mostly required to work from home.
So no one's gonna be visiting your home, it's just you to work, okay?
Any other questions by the board?
I have a question, if the um drain is just gonna go to the drywall, like the previous application would be, have it tied into the inlet? Looks like there's an inlet in front of the building, right on the curb line.
Yeah, I, as I don't see an overflow, I'm looking at the other engineers' plans, I don't see an overflow. You're absolutely right, the overflow, the drywall should be tied into it, that's right.
Right, okay. Is that what helps?
I have a question. The basement, you are going, in the basement, you are going to have only office, nothing else?
Right, there is like a uh, an office and a bathroom, and nothing else goes there, and they, and they go away.
And it's a full bath downstairs?
It's a full bath.
Okay, why why do you need a full bath in the basement when you just have an office?
Well, I mean, just because if you look at the plan, there's an unfinished area of the basement, so if we wanted to do like a gym or something like that, or even have it as a kid's playroom. or even have it as a kid's playroom, you know, we would be able to use it after just a trickle and two, and a gym, we would be able to just have a shower there. That's why we wanted a full bath, in the future, once it's finished, it's not here, you know, the reason.
All right.
Does, does the reduction in the patio also reduce the building coverage, is that part of the same thing, or is the building the house?
No, just imperious.
Just the, uh, total.
Yep.
Any members of the public who have any questions of these wit, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Burke, what's? I, I, I had a. Speak up, speak up.
I did, but I, he was talking, so I didn't want to interrupt him. The garages, they're going to face Holland?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, what's the height from the, uh, from the garage to the floor to the, uh, top of the roof that's going to be facing Holland?
I would estimate from the garage floor to the top of the deck area, because it's flat deck for the garage, it's probably about 10, 11 feet.
On the second floor of the house?
No, it's, it's actually going to be level with the, what's I call the first floor. Because the basement is tucked into the hill, and then you've got your first floor above that.
But if you're looking at, if you're looking at the garage from Holland, you're going to be looking at three levels, aren't you?
I think I have another question, I think it's roughly 30 to 35 feet, if I may. So you have your, your basement, which is your, your ground level, that's pretty much under soil. Uh, so when you look at the house from Holland, essentially, it's from elevation, the basement height, if you will, of the garage is about 10 feet. You have your first and second floor that have nine foot ceilings each, and then you have your rooftop, so I believe it is about 35 feet, which is the height that is, you know, sort of.
All right, so it's 35 feet, okay.
Is there an attic up there?
No attic, no.
What, what is really driving the variances on this is the proposal to have a two-car garage. And if you notice, there's like a jet out in this house on the right-hand side when you're standing in the street looking at it. And if you look at the architecturals, because they have a central entrance, if they had that entrance offset, I don't know what it does to the architecture, but you would have almost a complying plan then. Your building coverage would go down and your impervious would go down quite a bit. And that, I guess, comes to, you're going to have to demonstrate why you need a two-car garage.
Absolutely, so we actually are, six in my family, I have two kids, my wife and my in-laws, we're both school students, they're both in, uh, late seventies. So I have my son who goes to college, my daughter who's, I was in high school, she's already starting to take driver lessons, myself, my wife and my in-laws. So we, we need to accommodate at least, uh, five cars for the house eventually, as my daughter goes, so that's fine.
Now, with your elderly, um.
Which you can't do now on this plan.
She can't, well, she's, uh, she's already got her driver's permit, and she's still learning how to drive.
With your elderly family, this house has a lot of, um, stairs, is there any plans to put your, um, parents in that, in that basement room?
No, so, so we've already thought that we're going to do a lift, basically, to the stairs that goes into the house. Because my mother-in-law, she's actually just had knee surgery, and she's still on the, on the wheelchair.
So that basement, um, is not?
It's not a legal basement.
And if, if, if the board approves it, uh, part of the resolution, if it says that you cannot have a bedroom?
Absolutely, I would totally agree with that, because that is not the intention.
I had a question regarding the wall construction, because you're so close to the property line, that one side, I just want to, is it going to be, um, kind of between the tiebacks and the geotextile fabric, or is it a board in place wall, or a, um, glass wall?
Probably going to have to be a board in place wall, I haven't designed it, I really am not comfortable designing those kind of walls. So the architects will have to get a structural engineer to design it.
I would think that you would have to, being so close to the property line.
Including the two cars in the garage, how many cars can you fit on your, on your property?
I would issue two cars comfortably.
So there's, the, the driver will hold two cars?
Well, the driver can potentially hold two cars plus, maybe two cars, but you probably will be pretty much right on the sidewalk, which is not my property, you know, the.
The second car, those cars in the driveway will pretty much be right on the sidewalk?
Well, no, there's two cars that can go in the driveway and two cars.
In the garage, so you can hold four cars right now, yeah? And you have your parents with a car?
Yes.
You, your wife?
My wife and I, and my son.
Each have a car?
Correct, yes.
Your son has a car?
Correct.
That's four, and when your daughter starts driving, but your son's away?
My son is currently away.
Okay, so that car isn't really, that'd be home office?
It's, right, it's.
Hopefully, hopefully, not too often.
You know, obviously during holidays or something like that would be.
Sure, everybody's got temporary parking issues during holidays. Okay.
And if you look at the overall, I just want to add to the board, if you look at the overall footprint of the house, it's roughly 2,700 square feet, you know, it's got four bedrooms, uh, two and a half bathrooms between the, the second floor. It, it's really just a comfortable living size for six people, like, you know, we're not asking, you know, over expecting.
You are unwilling to truncate the house and get rid of that second garage?
You know, because, I mean, of the number of cars that we have, and also because of the topographic again of the lot, and to be able to have like an outside area, if you also look at the plans, we're using that second garage, which we absolutely need, given how many people were on the household, but we're also using it as a deck right above it to also be able to have some outdoor space from.
That's, that's not the deck you shrunk though, right?
No, that's the, it's labeled as a balcony.
It's a balcony, I apologize, it's a balcony.
With the Steve Graves, he had to get very creative about having any outdoor, recreational space, right?
When we took it to the property, I mean, you, you need a little bit of outdoor space.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness, or these, please come forward?
Sir, could you, uh, for the record, state your name and your residence?
You got to use a mic.
There's a microphone at the, no, no, Fred, 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 there's a, no, I forget it, no, there's another one on the table there.
Good evening, uh, Dave Tlack, 62 Holland Road.
What's your question?
Uh, my question is, uh, basically, um, or more of a concern, not so much a question.
Question, question, it's got to be a question.
Question is, how high is the retaining wall, and how close is it going to be to my house?
So, so I mean, I can answer, so the retaining wall on the front of, of the property will be, I think, it's showing from 332 to 335, so that's roughly about three feet high. And it should be about, I didn't mean it's about, what, about a foot or so, or around the property line? So I know that you currently have a wall there on that side of, of where I would put, you know, the retaining wall, and it's going to be roughly three feet, and just to kind of make sure that we hold the soil, it goes to right on the property.
How far back from the existing wall?
From your existing wall, well, it'll be at, close to my property, which, I mean, I don't know what the plan calls for, but.
So you're the house right to the right?
Yes, sir.
Right, so I mean, it, it looks like it's right, right beside his, his retaining wall, I would just put my retaining wall. And it's about three feet high, so it goes from, uh, 332 to like 335.
So I'll just.
It's about three feet.
It's concerning, because I'll just feel like walking through the tunnel on the inside of my house, what is up with me for it? It's not, it's not going to be a good look.
Well, I mean, go ahead, Fred.
Stealing, stealing off the plan, the wall, your wall is about three feet onto your property, and our wall is going to be a foot onto our property, so it'll be about four feet between the two walls.
And, and, and his wall is three foot, your, your wall is going to be, how, 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 how big is your wall going to be? So it's going to be stacked, it's going to be probably about seven feet?
So how, how is your retaining wall? Three feet?
About two feet, if I understand.
And the, and the, ground goes up from your retaining wall to his lot?
Yes, sir.
So he's going to have.
So you're only concerned so far that you've, seems to be the wall?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll get to that later. You'll have a chance to. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Explain your concerns. Quick question, you've taken down about 20 trees?
I've taken down about 23.
20 trees, yeah?
Yes, we already have.
Are you replacing any of those 20 trees?
Uh, yes, according to the, uh, forestry, uh, bill, they're asking that we put five trees back to a living. And that we're ready to put on the specifications.
And then, question for the neighbor, were, did those, losing those 20 trees create a more negative environment for you? Did it, did you lose a buffer between the house, did you lose shade?
The buffer was nice, but not, he has every right to put trees where he wants, but that's not my main concern.
You know, after the number of trees, that old trees that I've lost to disease, to bugs, to everything under the sun, someone who takes down old trees that might be suspect and puts it up new trees, I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not either, but 20 to five isn't a whole issue.
You know, you know, David, one time I had 30 trees in my backyard, and right now I've got about four, and I didn't intentionally take any of them down, so.
But, but also remember, this is a vacant lot that currently just had a very, a garage and a concrete hatch.
He's clearly entitled to take down the trees, what I, what I'm looking is, you know, given the fact that the trees are higher up, is now his house getting, you know, beamed by sun? Is, did you lose any privacy? I, I, I'm just asking questions because I'm not at the lot right now.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, this is a, it is a lot. It has no existing home on it, so we're not a scenario where we're knocking the house down because of how the trees are spaced around the lot to build on it. And with the grades, there are going to be those trees that were already taken down, right?
I have no problem with taking down trees for development, as long as it's reasonable, I was trying to get to the point of fully understanding the scope of what was taken down. That's all I'm doing, and every time I ask about trees, I don't have to, you know, I get criticized, but I, you know, if we can take trees down, I'm just asking questions. That's my job up here, is to ask questions at this point before I vote, so that I can make an informed decision.
Understood, and nobody on this side was criticizing you then.
Any other questions, sir? You have any other questions?
I, I do.
What's your other question?
It's in regard to the, uh, the soil removal and the location of the, of the bedrock that was, uh, to determine the location of said bedrock. When the drilling was going on, um, I was home, and my house is an old stone house with a, an outlevel at stucco. And with the, the drilling, and again, it's speculative where the bedrock lies, um, and the size and, and its range.
Are you asking a question as to how he's going to remove the bedrock, is that your question?
Our concern is my husband should be vet, that he has to remove the bedrock.
Well, that's not a question, what is your question? Are you, do you, do you want more information on how they're going to remove the bedrock? Are they going to remove any bedrock?
We're not removing any bedrock.
They're removing.
Oh, you're pretty certain that the bed, is there a report from somebody saying?
There is no bedrock, it's in the plans, there's no bedrock that requires to be removed, no, only soil.
This gentleman seems to think bedrock is going to.
No, it's, I mean, again, it's, I repeat the, uh, the analysis, there is no bedrock that won't be removed, it is not necessary. Only soil, which is what's in the application, roughly 1,093 yards of soil, it won't be removed, because again, the house will be tucked away into the hill, given it's a block after, of the lot.
So, so a couple of things, first of all, you, you should know that you will have time to give your opinions when the chairman asks for them.
I apologize.
No, you're not doing anything wrong, you're not doing anything wrong, just want to let you know, don't feel like you have to get something in, you will get time to, to state your case when, when it's your turn. What happens if you do come upon bedrock?
Again, just to answer the question, that's why we did the, uh, variance to make sure that that is not going to be required.
100%?
100%, we've already done that.
Okay.
It is 100% guaranteed, it is secured, insured by the engineering company.
Okay.
It is guaranteed, it is not required.
Okay.
It is not necessary.
Okay, so you, you don't have to drill or anything anymore?
No, there is no bedrock that has to be removed or do any drilling or any boring, it was already done, it was already tested, only soil needs to be removed, that is all. It's mostly, soil was also done, and it was mostly just regular, uh, topsoil, and they stick them on.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, I see none. Do you want to hold off something until I hear if there's any objectors or? At this point, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in objection to this application? Sir, if you wish to speak into objection and be an objector to this application, now is your opportunity to present your case, if that's what you'd like to do.
Give us your opinion.
You can't talk from back there, okay? Come on forward.
Tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Get sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony about giving a word to the board, choose help you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, you come and use the microphone. And what, just, you know, you, you don't have to be formal or anything, what are your concerns?
My concerns are, are, are certainly the, the size and scope of the dwelling, uh, being in, just echoing what is already on the block. It seems too tall, too big, it's not meeting a lot of things, and, uh, I'm just worried that this thing is going to be like a giant tower, like 10 feet off the side of my house. And it's going to, I've been there for 25 years, and it's been a great place to live, and it's going to be very, very different. You guys can build whatever you want within the guidelines, that's why the rules are there, the rules are the rules. But, you know, to be, you know, too big, too wide, not enough drainage, not enough this, not enough that, it just seems to be much, if it just fits within guidelines, you know, why not? And again, I was concerned about the blasting boring, because it is carving to the side of a, a landscape.
Well, Miss, Miss, they've, they've kind of assured you that there's not going to be any blasting or any bedrock, okay? With regard to, you said, the, the height of the building, they're not asking for a height variance, okay? There's some question about the two and a half, three, three-story, um, you're okay with that, or?
I want to hear Fred's.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little more about the, the two and a half, three-story?
Yeah, I mean, the, the two and a half, three-story is because of the basement. The way a basement is considered a story of grade is if 50% or more of the foundation is exposed out of the ground, that's not the case here. Or if the average grade around the house is more than 50% of the height. With this house being tucked into the hill, I did some approximate calculations based on, based on the elevations of the corners of the house, and I'm coming up with an average grade elevation of a little over 344, which puts me at the first floor, so that they can empty glass supplies to a story above grade. Yes, it does look like it at the corner where the garage is, because the garage is open, but the rest of the house, the ground climbs, and the elevations are such that three-quarters of the house is buried into the hill.
Just say that definition one more time, with the base.
If, if, if more than 50% of the foundation is more than 50% out of the ground, is basement is considered a story above grade. We don't have that condition here.
What percentage do you have, looks pretty close?
It's pretty close in my mind, is about five to 10%. Because three-quarters of the house is tucked into the hill, it's only, you're seeing the whole foundation where the garage is, on that right side.
I see the right side, on the left side, you're not going to see any of that?
Not going to see any of that, and as you're going up on the right side, it goes from garage to above the first floor, over that 25-foot left.
I got to defer to our experts on this.
I would, I would defer with the 50% scenario, that, um, it's not considered the floor, 50% is tucked in grade.
So you don't consider this a floor?
I would not consider it.
You consider this a two-story house?
Yes.
Okay. You said yes? He said yes.
Yes, the, the estimate was there's no attic, there's, there's a, a storage space up there, but there's no stairs or anything.
Mr. Gavin, do you have a chance to look at the elevations on this, the back of this house is going to look like a one-story house?
Yeah.
And, and, and when you say the size of the house, okay, um, if he was not requesting a building coverage variance, the ver, the house would be approximately 480 square foot less on the, on the footprint, however, it would not change in the height, so it might be back. However, it would not change in the height, so it might be back a few feet. So it's not he could come back with a conforming building coverage and still be just as high, so. Okay, I just want you to understand that there's, you know, there's a couple of variances they're asking for. First, the other thing is he's got a substandard lot. So we have to take into consideration that the lot is only 5,763 square feet, where the minimum required in that zone is 6,000. Now, this is very common in township, and in many areas, you'll find 4,000 square foot lots. So I I want you to just
2,000 square foot.
2,000. Yeah, if you're in Mount Tabor, you're dealing with 600 square foot lots, I know. So just to clarify some of those issues, these are the things that we have to look at when we decide, so.
I'm brand new to this process, so.
Yeah, so am I.
I don't need to see my tip today.
It's his first case tonight.
Fred, do we have a grading plan for this lot?
There's a grading plan that the other engineers did.
I think that the board should see a grading plan before we vote. Because I keep looking at this elevation, at the front steps, and how the floor areas below grade, the garages stick out, they're above grade. And then I go and look at this plan, and I don't see any grading plan other than retaining walls in a couple spot elevations. And because they're looking, you're looking at variances for coverage, the building and impervious, exactly how this retaining wall relates to the neighbor's property, I think you should get a reasonable representation of how this grading is going to end up. I think I need retaining walls in the front.
On the side in the front or the front?
I'm not sure. I just keep looking at the elevations and I keep I got a couple spot elevations. Obviously, the person who's building this house knows his site like the back of his hand, but that doesn't help us.
Understood.
I think we need that that picture to that's my suggestion, the board is see exactly how how this is going to end up.
We can certainly provide the
You're going to need to do it to get your building permit.
Right, he actually already did it. The problem is, he only submitted it to Justin as part of the major soil moving permit, and it was analyzed and reviewed, and it wasn't submitted with the board member package. So we can easily ask to be carried and submit that literally tomorrow to Nora, so that Mr. Holloway can also take a detailed look at it and double check Justin's review.
How much time you're going to need for to come back? 15 minutes, 20 minutes to maybe carry the case?
I would hope we would only need that if that's the bigger concern, since it was the work is already done and prepared.
Laura?
We can carry him December 15, 7:30.
December 15, 7:30?
Okay.
And you'll give us whatever extensions are required?
Absolutely.
Okay, this just for information purposes. This case is being carried to December 15. You will not be noticed again, so that if you want to come back for the next hearing, you have to come back on December 15. Now, if you have any questions with regard to that, you can call Nora in the zoning office, either the day or the day before, and make sure the case is still on, so you just don't show up, okay?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to carry this case to December 15 without further notice. Well, any extensions required?
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on December 15.
Thank you.
Have a nice Halloween and Thanksgiving.
This is it, too.
And you guess why you heard I retired, but I'm not retired yet. Now it's back on December 15. Just can't get
Fred, I've been trying to retire for three years, and I keep getting sucked back in, you know, so.
No, the
I don't feel bad for you. I really don't.
Good night, everybody.
Take care. I, you know, I was telling, hey Fred, I was I was telling Rupert Schoss today, he stopped over my house. He was my mailman for many, many years. And I said, yeah, the last survey I had, none of my house was done by Fred.
You're not ready to retire.
No, no. Why, sure. Okey-dokey. Let's call case
We have to end the first meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn the first meeting, 7 o'clock meeting.
All motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, right, and now we're going to call, we're going to start the second meeting. Nora, you ready?
Yes, correct, ready.
Okay, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, that is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10, calling for their six at sec. And then here's the Open Public Meetings Act. It is now 7:17, and this is our 7:30 meeting. And we're going to refrain from the Pledge of Allegiance, but you will call the roll, Nora.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Still here.
Mr. Pareek.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
But that's
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We have a board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. Pitt.
There.
Sorry, physical therapy. Okay. Mr. O'Neill.
We have our resolutions.
I know, I want to talk to him about this letter first, the letters first. You know, Mr. O'Neill, the one attribute that I've had for the last 31 years is I've always been cool, calm, and collected. Who believes that? But when somebody pee me, some applicants pee me off, and in this case, Mr. Zoom Auto, we've carried this case more than once, all right?
We are aware of that.
Okay. Tell your applicant to show up the next time with a full package, ready for the case to be concluded, or we're going to vote on it anyway.
Understood.
Okay. Okay, Mr. I know it's not, you're just the messenger, I know. But I I drive past that that facility and I see, and it's, you know, if you'd at least cut it down to the last number that he said, I wouldn't have so much anger, all right?
Yeah, I'll say that on too.
But, you know, at least show some interest, but this is not Lodi. I wish I could take pictures of some of the car lots down in Manahawken, that where the cars are lined up, every car has access to to an aisle.
And it's What's that? They got water plants all in there.
Okay, all right, so we're going to carry this case to when, Nora? January 26th, huh?
That's correct.
Yes, we're do that without that.
And without further notice, and you'll give us whatever extensions are?
Certainly.
January 26th.
Thank you.
Until you until your applicant is lucky, I'm not going to be here that night.
Thank you, everyone.
You did it?
No. No, I did not.
No, no, that's that's coming up soon. That's okay. No, that's the jug handle on Cherry Hill Road where the used car dealership is. Okay, all right, next case, resolution. Somebody want to move the resolutions?
Everyone can vote on these.
It looks like they're all seized. Are they all seized? They're all seized. Mr. Berkowitz, you just moved them?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, Jaskowitz. Chairman, I move all the resolutions on the agenda.
Okay, and Mr. Jaskowitz seconds them. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I probably should call a roll.
You got to call the roll on them, I'm sorry. Call the roll. Sorry.
Berkowitz. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready. Ira Kane.
Yes. All right, the agenda, we ready? Any other correspondence? Any other wild cards on our
Nope, that's it.
Application 2150, Adam Olschowski, 959 Vale Road, C variance, construct install a pool patio, expansion shed, slab, pad, pool filter, driveway expansion. Good evening.
Raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about giving before the board your self-egot?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, you're Adam Olschowski.
Olschowski. Olschowski. Check. And Judith? Thank you.
You may sit down, just use the microphones when you. So we got some variances here. You've got an existing driveway width of 24, where 28 is proposed, yards and courts, open deck. You're only looking for a half a percent increase, building coverage, 2 and a half percent over minimum. Oh, this is a pool, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. And 35 for impervious versus 30. You're putting a pool in, correct?
Uh, we have a pool, sir. We're just looking to add, we're replacing the concrete around it. We're just looking to add a foot on three sides of it.
Okay, well, pool is is not really impervious coverage, it's a collector's order, because there's no runoff generally from a pool. So it's not like you're putting a slab in and, you know.
Well, we're extending the slab.
Yeah, I know, I know, but that's a separate
We just put it in because we were told it.
Yeah, no, I understand. So is there existing, is there existing slabs now that you're replacing, or is this
Yes, sir, the slabs sliding away from the pool. So we're replacing it for safety reasons and extending it, so we can add a fence on the concrete.
Okay, okay. And
Drive lanes.
Part of the driveways, catch them.
Uh, our, right now, our driveway is brick, and we're looking to put in a blacktop driveway. And we're going to, I live with my parents, and I have my father, who's going to be wheelchair wheelchair bound soon. And we're going to be moving the doorway over and adding a ramp, but as of right now, the doorway's on the other side. So we're just making it so we have the room to move them over there when we need to.
Okay. I'm sure you don't want
Is the ramp shown here?
Uh, the ramp is not part of the plans yet, that we plan on doing that in the either next year or the year after.
Is the ramp, is it going to be in the front of the house, right?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to come back.
Why don't we
For the ramp? Probably, yes.
Right, how do you get into the house? It shows on the survey, a little P written in. Is that the doorway in?
The the P is part of where the driveway would go, and all the way to the right of that is where the front door is right now.
All the way to, oh, okay. Well, you may not, that ramp may be in where there's a portion of the house that sticks out further to the road than
How much elevated is your front step to the
It's two steps and then another step into the house.
So you need the ramp going all the way into the house?
Yes.
So you may be kept running your ramp from your garage doors.
Well, the game plan is to move the front door eventually, next to the garage doors, and then just put the ramp on the driveway in.
Okay, you probably be okay then.
There's no way we could approve some
You've got no plans?
Nothing.
That's the plan, it makes it, the door might stay where it is, too.
No, no, the doors definitely move in.
Gotta move.
Yes.
I don't think you're going to need much of a ramp, though, if you put that door over next to the garage doors. Hopefully, you don't have to come back and see us.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board? These are really de minimis requests, and the impervious coverage, if we take into consideration, pool is is not even a consideration. Any questions on the right?
No.
Questions on the left?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? Hear none, seen none, nothing else you'd like to add, right?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and support of this application? Hear none, seen none, someone like to make a recommendation?
I can do it. The the requests are de minimis in nature, and clearly, there's a long-range plan here that you're you're approving the the structure of the pool, you're going to be preparing for a ramp. Certainly, we recommend that we approve this application.
Okay, volunteer to frame a resolution?
Sure. Application 21, column 50, Adam Olschowski, 959 Vale Road, block 703, lot 7, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to board of adjustment to construct, install a pool patio expansion, shed on a slab, pad, pool fil, uh, pool filter and driveway expansion contrary to section 430-275H, section 430-10I, section 430-35, columns 10 and 13. Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Prasad. Oh, Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of the variances granted will memorialize this in two weeks, and you'll be free to proceed.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you very much. Application 2155, Richard Kennedy, 119 Rainbow Trail, C variance to construct the driveway expansion and replace existing driveway area contrary to lots of sections.
Will you both be providing testimony? Okay, raise your right hands, you swear a firm testimony about giving before the board your self-egot?
Yeah.
And for the record, ma'am, your name is?
Jennifer Pollit.
Jennifer?
Pollit, P-O-L-L-I-T.
Thank you, you're sworn.
So you are in Rainbow Lakes, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you, you're in R3 zone, which if I remember correctly, is 15,000 square foot zone. You don't have a 15,000 square foot lot, do you? Do you?
I can't imagine I do.
You've got a 50, what is this, 50 by 135? Okay, so you've probably got half of it in the in the zone. You're on Rainbow Trail, I guess there's not a lot of on-street parking on Rainbow Trail. Yeah, I've driven through there.
Yes.
That's, so tell us why you want to do what you're what you're planning on. Oh, your garage is behind your house?
Yes, sir.
So, in order to get to the garage, you have to drive all the way around the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, just continue, I'm sorry.
Could you get a car into that garage?
I didn't...
Could you get a car into it?
Yes, sir, you can.
Little one.
Ah, it sets me to car garage.
Car garage.
Yes. Which is unusual.
Don't look like there's much space there.
So, the driveway is obviously very narrow. We had to have two trees taken out, so it's torn up the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
So, that is basically the reason for having to tear it up and reblacktop it.
Okay.
What's that little piece behind the... You're adding, what's that all about?
That was the other side of the garage, which was...
Now, that would fit a compact car.
Yes, that would.
But it says you're adding that piece. What's that all about?
That's actually just... Yeah, you had the dirt all the way up to the wall, which was the garage side, and it was collapsing the wall. So, there was a wall put in for retaining wall to keep the dirt back so the garage wouldn't get damaged. So, that's why this was getting built in there.
Oh, okay. So, you're kind of at the minimum that you could do in terms of impervious coverage?
Yes. But we can't get up to the garage unless we can put the driver back in where... Where our property line is on the edge of our driveway.
Yes. Not, um, uncommon in areas like this.
It's easier to use our driveway more than we do.
Oh, I hope you charge it.
They can't get near it, so they use ours.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none and seen none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, sir, thank you.
Any members who in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Quick recommendation? De minimis?
Very de minimis.
Very de minimis, thank you. Rec... Uh, someone frame a resolution?
I can do it. I can do it. Application 21, column 55. Richard Kennedy, 119 Rainbow Trail, block 115, lot 8, zone R, DST to grant or issue C variance to construct a driveway expansion and replace existing driveway area contrary to section 430-275, 10, and section 430-35, column 30.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora Calderold?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Pareek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Hurricane.
Yes. Results of the variances granted will memorialize this in two weeks. Now, I'm just gonna apologize that you had to sit here for an hour, but please understand, we have a 7 o'clock meeting because we're so busy that we try and schedule some things ahead of our normal meeting. Unfortunately, they didn't turn out to be so fast, such fast cases, so... But I hope you enjoyed it.
Hope you got your eyes on it.
You saw quite an interesting evening, let me tell you. This is...
We'll be back for the quiz.
You'll get a written test as you leave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Alrighty, and let's call case... What did I do with mine? Case 2123.
No, what about...
Oh, what am I doing?
That's right.
Who?
2149, I think it was crossed off. Correct, Nora?
2149 is crossed off. You want 2123.
You're right.
Chairman's right.
Good evening, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of the applicant. We are here proposing relocation of the Mathnasium, which is currently down the road, down North Beverlywood Road, to this site. Both of them would be permitted uses except, of course, the Mathnasium is not a nonprofit school. It is a for-profit institution and not covered by the ordinance. So, that needs a use variance. We have the variances for the, uh, two uses in the same building and we have a parking pre-existing condition where there's no parking really to speak of except for two lots in the back. But with me this evening is Mr. Seyed.
So, you're gonna provide testimony?
I am, I'm sorry.
Actually, I just wanted to... Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony about the report's true self, you got it?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
It's Mohammed Seyam.
And you're the owner of the subject, uh, businesses?
Uh, my wife and I.
And you're gonna provide, um, factual testimony?
Yeah. My wife's actually on the way. The Mathnasium is her business, um, but I usually handle this end of it. She's just, uh...
Have a babysitting...
Yeah, yeah, there's a little bit of baby... She is on the way. She, you know, she wants to, um, speak before you, of course, but, um, I'm prepared to speak. Any questions I have?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn.
You may proceed.
Thanks, Mr. Seyed. As you indicated, you and your wife both operate the, uh, Mathnasium. She's actually the brains of the operation with the Mathnasium, right?
Definitely, yes. I'm the janitor.
But as such, you are... You're both familiar with the operation of the Mathnasium and what it is you're proposing here, right?
Yes.
Now, the Mathnasium is, uh, being relocated. It's gonna be about room for about 60 students in the building right now. And that's pretty much when you're relocating up North Beverlywood Road, too, right?
Yep. It's pretty much the same use, uh, same number of students, similar size.
Now, during COVID, of course, you started offering programs online, right?
Yes. Some of our, uh, our sessions turned to online sessions since obviously parents were not willing to bring the students into the center.
But your expectation and the, uh, what the feedback you're getting from the parents is they do want to come back in person eventually?
Yeah. Uh, a lot of them are back in person, uh, but the best, you know, uh, best method of this Mathnasium is in-person tutoring, you know, works best that way.
Now, you're renting currently in the space you're at right now.
Correct.
And, uh, this is a, uh, you and your wife through your company that's listed and purchased this building. You intend to do improvements to the building exterior and interior, right?
Correct. Yes. It's... It needs some work, definitely.
Uh, part of that is gonna be the, uh, use of the laundromat, which would be separate, separate entrance ways, separate business from the, uh, Mathnasium itself.
Correct. It was... My wife and I, we really liked that neighborhood. The students are great. We get, um, students from Montville, or simply like Hiwaka. And, uh, that building that we founded, there wasn't much in that area and it was a little larger than we needed, but, um, there's not much available in that area.
How far from your location are you moving? From your present location?
My... The Mathnasium is in the shopping center with the, uh... It's got a Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know what that restaurant is called now.
It's by Yellow...
Mister Yellow Cover.
Yellow.
Oh, okay.
Gotta be a mile.
Oh, it's a mile?
Yeah, it's about a mile. It's about a mile.
So, she, you know, she wants to keep the same students, the same parents. She's developed relationships with the community and she loves it there, you know? The rent's very high where she's at and, or, you know, she wants her student building.
Okay.
Now, the current business, the kids are all being, obviously being dropped off. They're not driving there themselves, right?
Some high school students, uh, very few might drive themselves, but mostly it's elementary, middle schools and some high school students are just dropped off and picked up an hour later.
Okay. How many, uh, how many students do you think you see? Or is this a question I should wait for your wife to give?
Uh, she is... She'll know the exact numbers on that stuff, but, um, you know, it's a little different right now in, uh, in COVID, but, um, just based on the tables that we've shown and the number of seats, that would be like the peak maximum, uh, which usually is not reached. I think it was...
60 seats?
Maybe 60, but yeah.
60 seats?
Most of the time, it's much less than that because they're open for, you know, after-school hours and some people choose to come 3:00 to 4:00, or all different hours. So, it's, uh, it fluctuates.
So, now, the ratio of, uh, students to teachers is about, uh, three... Everywhere from 3:01 to 5:01, right?
Somewhere around there, yeah. A lot of times, it's, yeah, 3:00, 4:00, 5:01, yeah.
Okay, is that staff there all day?
No, they don't, uh, there's no staff there till after... It basically operates after school, usually 3:00 to 7:00, 3:00 to 8:00, and then to close, uh, Friday. And they have some Saturday hours that goes like 10:00 to 10:02.
Nothing on Sundays?
Nothing on Sunday, nothing on Friday.
If the board does approve this, the hours of operation will be put into the resolution. So, do we have it?
Well, I could tell you her, um, or she... I could look it up or she could tell us her exact operating hours.
Okay, thank you.
I could say that, uh, for...
This, this, in a lot of ways, is not different than the previous use of this building, is it?
Well, Mr. Carlback's gonna get up and he's gonna do a comparison to the similarities of this operation.
I don't know if anybody else is familiar as I am with this, but this used to be Mary Lou Hill's dance studio for years and years and years.
The kids were dropped off for the dance studio.
And if it was just Mathnasium, you wouldn't need a variance.
Well, the Mathnasium is a for-profit institution and your ordinances say only nonprofit educational institutions are permitted.
So, why could the, uh, dance studio be there?
One of the...
That's allowed.
That's not educational?
Dance studios are allowed as a specific use.
Is it? Oh, okay. All right.
There's a bunch of other things like that.
It's a second use, I know.
The second... I understand the second use.
Like a lot of zones, the zone has changed as uses come in. You get a dance studio in there, they change the zone to allow the dance studio. But, uh, we think, you know, we're not gonna make a big fuss about it. We don't think there's really any operational difference between a nonprofit and a for-profit educational institution. I don't know what the anticipation was in the ordinances, but we're not really gonna argue about the correctness of the ordinance. We think, uh, that the uses here are very similar to those uses that are permitted. Uh, and the two uses in the building, it's something that's going on up and down North Beverlywood Road. I'm not really sure why that's not permitted. Uh, it's next door, it's across the street. It's every building just about has multiple uses. It's multiple storefronts. It's North Beverlywood Road. This is the way the road's grown up. This is the traditional uses on the road. But I don't wanna steal all of Mr. Carlback's thunder.
No, okay. I'm sorry if I interrupted you. Why don't you proceed, I'm sorry.
So, I lost my thought. We were talking about, uh, the students coming in and being dropped off, right?
Yes. Most parents don't stay. A lot of them are looking for an opportunity to drop their kids up somewhere. This is perfect. They drop them off, um, they pick them up. That's what happens at certain locations. Um, and we chose this location because it was on the corner and there's a side street, which is exactly what the dance studio did. And parents would come on the side street, drop off or pick up and not be dropping off or picking up anyone on North Beverlywood Road.
There's a no parking zone right in front of the building also that allows for drop-off, right?
Right.
So, now, your current operation has kids walking from the neighborhood into it also?
Yes, some kids walk.
So, that's, uh, another reason why you want it to stay close in the neighborhood so you don't really lose any customers.
Yeah, my wife's really grown close to the kids in the community. She knows, like, the first kids she had. She's still staying in touch with them. She's very passionate about the business and she doesn't want to move out of that area.
I have no further questions for this witness?
Questions of the witness by the board? Well, I have some questions about the second, uh, business you proposed there.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Wanna describe that a little?
The spot I lost was the laundromat. 12 washers, 12 dryers, right, Mr. Seyed? And, uh, how many, uh, how many, uh, people will be operating there? How many employees?
Well, I think one of the reasons we chose is because it's minimal employees because we know there's limited parking. I know that, I think the architect's plan showed whether it was two or three employees, but, uh, I know most, uh, laundromats operate with just one employee there and sometimes none, but it's very low.
Do you have water allocation for the laundromat?
We have not explored that yet, but there's no anticipation that it would be over the limit.
Are both entrances to the two businesses, the entrances to both businesses gonna be on North Beverlywood Road?
No, Mr. Chairman. If you're looking at the plan, you'll see that there's an entrance being proposed for the side. There's a modification to the building.
You believe the existing water service is adequate?
We think that the water service will be under the limit. That's something, definitely, if there's a water restriction, then that's gonna apply. There is water restriction in town. Uh, I don't know what the water usage at the, uh, laundromat would be.
Yeah, the DEP, I think, does a calculation. I don't know.
Yeah, they do.
And it's pretty, it's pretty...
So...
That's something that'll obviously have to be addressed and hopefully, uh, the town will keep its schedule with that water restriction and we'll soon be out of it.
So, there's really no parking here at all?
There's never been any parking on the, uh, on the property or the area.
Some reason I thought there was angle parking on the side, but I guess maybe they went and put curbs in there, maybe...
No, that's a block down, Mr. Chairman.
Is that?
That's a block down, I think you're thinking of.
Oh, I know the word that says, John, I believe me. You said that you had a plan to do some exterior improvements. Can you elaborate a little bit?
Well, uh...
That wall is pretty black.
Yeah. Uh, the side wall, the large blank wall that you see, at the very least, the laundromat would be glass storefront, which would be the backside. And, um, you know, we definitely... I think the stucco needs some attention. Um, I don't know, some areas that were kind of falling apart. Stucco really doesn't, doesn't last that long, so that may have to be addressed. At the very least, the paint color's not really our favorite color. Um, so, hopefully, you wouldn't see a big yellow wall anymore. It'll be broken up with a storefront, um, and, uh...
You're saying you're gonna bring glass around the corner?
No, just, um, would be the, the...
Less, less...
The front of the laundromat, which is on the side street, would be a glass storefront. I think that's showing.
Okay, well, that's what I mean.
Right.
If you added some belt courses or something in there. You don't intend to put any windows in the side?
No, uh, not on that side because, um, a lot of the design of the Mathnasium is they have, uh, this math artwork. Looks great in the center and the more windows, the less of that gets put up.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the whole front is already windows. There's a lot of windows, the whole front with the building, so... And then there's one side door already existing. I think there's another for both sides. Those would be...
I mean, they're not picking on you, but, you know, North Beverlywood Road, they're trying to get it to look more attractive. That's been a goal of the town for 40 years.
That's a great goal. I, before you guys, like, 15 years ago, I have another property on North Beverlywood Road and you approved something and I'm still trying to build it. So, I'm all with you on improving North Beverlywood Road. Yeah, I own 63 North Beverlywood Road.
Oh.
And I've been trying to build something there for a long... This board approved that 15 years ago and I've been doing nothing but trying to build there. So, I'm with you. North Beverlywood could use a spruce up and I think this will help.
That is such a small lot.
Agreed, but I have plans and everything's ready to go. There's one glitch, but that's a whole nother story.
Now, Mathnasium is a franchise, right?
Yes.
So, they give you these materials you're describing. These are common in all Mathnasiums. They provide you with materials...
Right.
That your tutors use to help with the kids.
Yes, yes, there is. The curriculum provided by them, um, the design of the interior, you know, they approve. They, you have purchase laws up from them, your signage needs to be approved by them, the site needs to be approved by them. They're pretty strict because it's a franchise, they want it to adhere to their standard, so.
Everything from five-year-olds to high school, right?
Yep.
Can we get back to the?
Laundromat.
Laundromat?
Sure.
When I look at a, at a commercial use like this, I look towards the. The need in the town and is it something that's good for North Bevillik Road? And I, and I remember a long time ago when we had three dry cleaners on the block and somebody wanted to put a fourth dry cleaner in. And we asked them, you know, the, the market isn't any bigger. What makes you think you're going to survive, you know, as we give you this variance? And they didn't, we gave it to them and they didn't. And I'm looking at North Bevillik Road, you already have two laundromats on North Bevillik Road. One has more than ample parking, okay? You have, to my, best of my knowledge, there are laundromats within the big apartment complex up, up the road. And you have a single, a significant amount of single-family residence houses. What would you say, John, ninety-nine percent of people have a washer and dryer? Okay. Tell me why we need this, tell me why this is a good thing for, for North Bevillik Road.
Well, I'm sure the, the planner's going to give some information on that.
Well, you're, you're the business, you're the businessman.
Our thoughts were, were, were two things. It's a side street, so it wasn't like a, you know, you're going to put a restaurant or something or a big impact to the neighborhood. A lower impact and the other thought was we could operate that business with, without having someone there all the time. And we're already in the mathnasium. So we would be operating it. It's not a business that you have to be inside there the entire time it's running. So it, it kind of made sense as like a co-business with a business that we're inside of more. So kind of, like if you thought of it on its own, does someone want to open a laundromat there? Maybe you'd say no, but if it's a secondary business and it's, you know, you're already there for that, it kind of really made sense to us.
And the entrance that I had is going to be on Longview, right?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, I was actually going to ask that exact same question for another case. So when we determine whether we're going to prove it or not, is that something that we should consider? The viability or, or are you asking that question just?
No, I want to know that it's going to enhance the, the.
Okay.
Well, it's a D variance, so yes.
But the viability, does that matter in?
It's really a need question, okay. Need, not, not that, like I said, there's three, there were three dry cleaners on the block and.
Right.
Well, let's be, I want to be clear about this, laundromats are permitted uses on that, in that zone.
But you're asking for variance to put both of them in there.
Right, I don't think that the appropriateness of the question is, is this serve a public good? It's something.
No, usually they're viable or not.
These are businesses. I mean, if that were the test, how many pizza places would there be on North Bevillik Road?
But how many of them need variance?
I marvel at the number of pizza places.
How many of them need variances going there?
How many are in standalone buildings? They're all in secondary building. They're all shot, they're all slotted with something else.
Hey, I didn't build North Bevillik Road, I just lived there for thirty-four years, so.
And the pizza businesses seem to keep going, you know, so somebody knows something more than I do about pizza. And our client's taking a stab at putting in this laundromat.
I just, I, I wanted to understand, and he, and he explained it to me, he's going to run the business himself. So he doesn't really care if he makes a lot of money, it helps pay the rent.
The mortgage, yeah.
And he doesn't have to hire any employees or a minimal amount of employees to do it. It's, it's, I think that was, was a very good answer, Mr. O'Gill. I think you gave me a very good answer. I think Peter's question is the most important. Whether you can get water.
I think that's. Definitely something needs to be looked at.
How many people do you think are going to be using your laundromat at one time?
I think the, the architect estimated it was somewhere maybe fourteen at, at most, there was only.
There's only twelve slots?
There's only, yeah, there's only twelve. It's not, it's not a large space, so.
So where are they going to park while they're doing their laundry?
There's parking on the street, but I don't think, not all of them drive. There's, there's street parking, a lot of businesses on North Bevillik. Parking most of the time. Wouldn't be there that long.
For twelve cars?
We're going to talk about that next.
We need to time the cycle of the, the length of the math lesson, the cycle of the washer and dryer, so the parents can drop off their kids and close at the same time.
I bet you the same number, ninety-nine percent of the parents driving with kids have laundry facilities in their house.
You know, the water question is certainly an important question, but I don't think it goes to whether or not the variance should be granted. Eventually the water restriction will come off and all estimates are that it'll come off at the midpoint of next year, current to current estimate. Now, there's no way to know if that's actually going to happen, of course, but.
It keeps raining water. Well, yeah, we can grant subject.
Yeah, if he can't get his water, he can't open up. Just that simple.
And then what happens, it's, it's just remains?
Until the water restriction comes off, he starts, that's, that's going on a lot of bigger businesses, a lot of, uh, bigger institutions currently.
To clarify, you can't, because I obviously want to build it, so let's say it's granted, had needless, you don't, the, the restrictions in place. Can you build it and just operate?
The, the construction, that, that would be in.
Right.
Yeah, you can't, you can't get a CO.
Okay, you can do the construction, you just can't use it.
You can't use it, and that's going on, we have, you know, not to get too far down a rabbit hole, but I have bigger clients that got approved for bigger things that are currently going to wait for the water.
You have any other?
I don't have, I have no further.
Are you painting something for the mathnasium on the wall?
That's interior.
Oh, that's interior, okay. Are you going to spruce up, I think you said, you're going to spruce up that yellow wall and power wash those bricks?
Yeah, yeah, we'd love to do something, I mean.
Yeah, could you put some architectural elements on it to break up the wall?
Does the franchise have certain colors you, you, you have to use?
Yeah, they do have colors.
It's not like paint?
No, it's, it's just black, black, red and white. Usually, you know, usually the, the mathnasiums are in like a storefront or strip mall, so they don't get into detail on the actual, you know, building. But since this would be ours, you know, we want to make it all nice and stuff.
You could put some decorative elements on the side to make it a little, break up that wall.
Existing signage?
Um, there, there's like a post sign sticking off that I don't think we'd use, but where the, the dance sign is in, it's a, we're set signs, we try to use that same, same area.
You have a new signage for the.
You know, look up any signs on the Longview side?
For the laundromat.
Do you need, do you need variance for the two different signs?
No, it's a corner line.
But.
So it gets two sides. One in the front, one on the side, each, each street frontage hits a sign.
Each side, each side you get on.
Right, so the one for the laundromat will be on the side, the mathnasium will be where the existing sign is in the front.
What are the hours of the laundromat? Late, late night, I can do my laundry and make noise while I'm waiting for my clothes to dry, eleven o'clock at night?
We don't, I don't know if we have the hours listed anywhere yet, do we?
Why don't we think about that? We'll come back with an answer in a minute.
You, you have multiple classrooms in, in mathnasium, like how many classes are in, within the?
So it's, it's basically just an open floor plan and so that it's not divided. There's maybe one, one room that's for assessment, like test day. The rest is open and the, the way the tutoring works is one instructor will rotate between four or five students. And they each have a binder to work on, you know, what they're, whatever subject it is they're working on. So it's, it's not separated into classrooms.
And the peak number of students is about sixty or something?
That's, that, that usually doesn't happen, but that's, the chairs are there if there's an event or maybe there's a key session and that, that, you know, that's available, yes.
And are there multiple sessions, like you start at four o'clock, say, so you have five or six sessions until you close?
So right now, they just have drop-in hours, so if someone come, whatever time they come in, they usually stay for one hour and then leave.
Okay.
It's a usually open scheduling, they did have to modify that a little during COVID, but prior to COVID, it was unscheduled, drop-in, anytime for an hour. Most plans, people would come two to three times a week. Right there. Very flexible schedule, which are the design of it, which the parents like.
So going down Longview, is there parking on the road that's permitted or is there a point where it says no more parking?
I believe Mr. Carlback hasn't answered that.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? No questions, next witness.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a brief recess to see where my missing witness is?
Sure. So you'll have an opportunity to make comments later in the application.
Uh, this is Ms. Siam, I'd like to introduce her and have her sworn.
Could you raise your right hand, man? You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, so help you God.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Is the truth so help you God, and for the record, can you state and spell your name?
B A N N A and then F E Y A M.
I'm sorry, louder?
B A N N A F E Y A M.
Okay, you're sworn, Mr. Chairman, leaving it with his.
Ms. Siam, you operate the mathnasium down the North Bevillik Road along with your husband and you're going to be doing the operations here on site?
Yes.
Your husband was able to testify a little bit about how the students get to the site. He testified that they were being dropped off, testified that they were walking up to the neighborhood. Wonder if we can give your impression of how that's going and how you expect that to operate in the future?
Yeah, um, the majority, I mean, especially now COVID, like the majority of students are all dropped off, picked up. During COVID, we don't even have any of the parents sitting in, but even outside of COVID, very rarely do you have a parent waiting in the, in the waiting room. So it's all drop-off, pick-up, there's kids walking because there's a lot of people also coming from nearby neighborhoods. So, yeah.
Do, do you have hours of operation, does it differ in the summertime to schooltime?
Slightly.
Could you go through that?
Yeah, in the, uh, schooltime right now, it's mostly like three to eight. We are open though from, we have, usually my senior director's there at twelve. And then in the summer, and that's Monday through back Thursday, and then Saturday, it's a little different now with COVID, but it's around, it's normally ten to two. And then in the summer, it's Monday through Fridays normally, again, it was a little different with COVID, but normally it's Monday through Friday. On Monday through Thursday, I think it's two to seven and Friday, eleven to two, I want to say. It, it varied a little in the last year and a half, that's why I'm a little.
And you plan on operating the laundromat from nine in the morning to nine at night?
Yeah, something like that.
You guys will be doing that with maybe one employee helping you?
Yeah, and.
That will be Monday through Saturday also? Okay.
How many employees do you have at the mathnasium at one time?
Pre-COVID or COVID?
Well, what you propose.
It's going to be after COVID.
After COVID.
Going forward.
But, um, so I always have my senior director there and then other than that, it depends on the time of day. I would say in addition to him, our highest peak outside of COVID was probably about, be about. Sorry, I'm just trying to think of the capacity in our center.
About fifteen?
Yeah, I wouldn't say even that much, less than fifteen employees at one time for sure. Yeah, I would say less.
Fifteen.
I would say less.
Can you, can you speak in the microphone, please?
I would say less than fifteen, I would say probably about at most. Maybe ten or eleven, something like that, at most.
And that would be from three to eight?
Um, not the whole time.
Yeah, but.
Because there's a peak time and usually that's between like five and seven.
Okay, so five and seven is when you would have your fifteen?
I wouldn't say fifteen, I would say at most maybe ten.
Okay.
Or you, each, each person handles up to five students?
Each person handles up to about four students. Um, so, um, based on the capacity and what we have in our center, um, so, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, the numbers are a little different because COVID kind of messed with.
So say you have ten, right now you've got parking for ten?
Uh, well, right now, yes.
Right now, right. Thoughts on where those ten are going to park in the new facility?
Yeah, in the neighborhood, there's a lot of side street parking, so I don't see that.
So they're going to go down Longview and start?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with them being able to park anywhere close by.
And in the building, are you going to have a door inside connecting mathnasium to the laundromat, just curious?
We'll save that for the architect.
Yes, that's sure.
Just in time. I have no further questions for this witness.
Questions? Questions, yes, Mr. Burke, please. You say you're going to have sometimes about ten employees at one time?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and that's to cover what, about forty students?
That would be forty students, which is a very high number, that would be like absolute peak probably time.
Now, can you estimate how many, I, I'm not sure if you can do this, but of the forty students, how many parents are going to be parking their car and coming in to get their kids? As opposed to the kids waiting outside for them?
Well, they don't wait outside, we have a waiting area in our center and so like our, it's going to be, I think, glass is what we usually, I mean, right now it's all glass.
It's glass now, yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming we're going to do similar with our new buil, building where it's going to be glass. So most of the time the parents literally just come, the kids see them, we have instructors there that make sure it's okay for them to leave and they wait. So we rarely have parents coming in to pick up, if they do, it's mostly because they want to talk to my senior director or come there myself, but usually we schedule that meeting.
What's the cycle, like do, does everyone, if it's an hour lesson, does it start on the hour?
Yeah.
Or do you stagger them, so one group starts at four, then four fifteen, then four thirty?
So now, yeah, well, now with COVID, we've started doing scheduling, before COVID it was different, but we plan to stick.
Trying to envision beyond COVID.
Yeah, so we're planning to stick, we're planning to stick to the scheduling.
Three o'clock session, four o'clock.
Or you have like a three o'clock session, like it might not be exactly three, but three, four, whatever it is, but it's, yeah, time.
But they all do all, what I'm trying to get is.
Oh, are they all coming at the same time?
Start at the same time and end at the same time?
They will start and, and similar time, yes, yeah.
Now, right, I'm sorry, I didn't intend to interrupt.
No, no. How do you envision it, if this is for a different expert client? You got, how many kids at one time? Forty kids, all right, so let's say thirty, all right, let's say thirty kids, that's thirty cars, all coming to pick up Johnny and Sally at four o'clock.
So, okay, so we actually have a lot of carpooling with my kids. There's a lot of tight neighborhoods in the area and a lot of the families actually are close and they, like, we've had like six kids dropped off at the same time, one car. So that's, that's, you know, six out of the thirty, that's great, that's one fifth of the students.
You work for mathnasium.
See, it's paying off, um, but, uh, yeah, so we actually, we have carpooling and at the same time, I bought this property because in my head, it was a, it was a dance studio and I actually knew some people that took their kids there and I never heard that it was an issue of dropping off kids and they had very similar, where, okay, you come in, there's a, there's a time for when the session, you know, the, the lesson starts. And they, they were there for like decades.
Yeah, when, when you heard that, did you ask how, how does pickup work? Drop off's pretty easy, you pull up, you let the kid out and you go, how does pickup work when they get there five minutes earlier or the lesson runs five minutes late? Where's everybody waiting, did you get any information about that?
So we have a waiting area in our center.
No, no, I'm talking about the cars, not the.
Oh, the cars, where the cars waiting?
Yeah.
You know, I did not ask that, I just didn't really, I figured if it was working for them, I, I didn't even know it would be an issue that we would have to do all this zoning stuff that I don't know, this is all new to me. What?
It's like welcome.
Yeah, so this is all new to me, this is my husband's department, um, so I just, I keep telling him, I'm like, I don't understand why we have to do all this because I know that was there for like decades and it was never an issue. I know I talked to my friend who's a Realtor who actually helped us purchase the property and I discussed it with her and she said, oh, I, you know, I brought my daughter there like fifteen years ago and it was never an issue. And I asked her about parking, so I did talk to her about it, um, and she just said, well, it wasn't an issue with them, so I can't see it being an issue with you guys. So I did not even have to wait a year, a year to even get to use the property.
Well, we're also going to have some testimony about how we hope that this use will engage neighboring uses in the neighborhood. Maybe some of these kids who are walking up to your place will be walking down for ice cream or some.
Yeah, we will bring more.
Or any, as we already discussed, the ample opportunities of pizza on North Bevillik Road. So hopefully there'll be some engagement bringing this many kids into the neighborhood.
And there is a pizza place, I think, next door and I'm thinking of possibly talking to them and trying to figure out if I can maybe come up with a way, you know, maybe we can use their parking lot at certain times for pickup and drop off and we use, we buy their peep, like, you know, I was thinking of talking with them.
Get a hundred on the crazy, get two dollars off.
So, um, we have pie day and we get lots of pie. So I definitely thought about that as well because I know their parking lot is actually right.
We'll have some more, we'll have some more testimony.
You know, whoever the Realtor was that told you there was never a problem there, there's always been congestion. Forever and ever and ever, okay? And in the old days, Mary Lou Hale was, was right next to your number sixty-three, right next to sixty-three in a small place, okay? And you, and you used to have the congestion there, so is it a, is it a showstopper? I don't know if it's a showstopper, but the Realtor told you, who told you there was nothing?
I mean, she was only telling me from her personal experience, kicking her daughter.
She's a Realtor.
Realtors, personal experience, we could do all night about.
Yeah, the worst thing you could do is listen to them about tax advice because they, they know all about selling houses and the tax consequences. So it's always been there, that's, that, and that's Bevillik Road.
Right.
Up and down the road, that's Bevillik Road, you go past the Cabot Paradise, when he's hopping, it's traffic there and, you know, and on and on and on.
So, so if, if they were not doing the laundromat, they would be here because it's a for-profit and the ordinance is nonprofit?
That's correct.
So that's really.
More than one use in the, in the building.
But if they weren't doing a second business, it would only be because it's for-profit?
Right.
Okay.
And I don't know if my husband mentioned, like, the laundromat is like the whole, the whole.
Right, but we're, but we're thinking through this, to us, it doesn't matter, it is still, how many cars? And it's how many cars are coming for both and, and it's all those things.
Right, we'll be talking some more about that.
I'm ready.
No more questions for this witness.
Uh, any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? Hear none, seen none, you wanna bring your next witness?
Yes, we have some questions for our architect, he was all set up, let's get right into that. Thank you, Ms. Cyan.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's yourself, you got? For the record, could you please state your name?
My last name is Ragad, R-A-G-A-D, first name is Ashra, A-S-H-R-A-Y.
And you will be providing architectural testimony?
That's correct.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
And you've been sworn in before this board or the boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been qualified and sworn.
Thank you. Mr. Ragad, we had a lot of questions about the site, about improving the site and making it look better. Could you just describe for us what it is you're proposing here for both, both uses? Yeah, go ahead, take that one. This is the same plan that you forwarded to the board?
That's correct.
That was also in color, as everybody remembers?
Uh, yes. Good evening. So basically, the scope of this project is mostly interior. We're dealing with a one-story commercial building.
Thank you.
It was a one-story existing commercial building that was used previously as a dance studio, as the owner testified. So we do have the existing floor plan on the left-hand side in sheet A zero-two. It was three compartments with some toilets in the middle and some utilities in the back. And we're basically proposing to clear out the interior and divide it up into two businesses. The front business would be a Mathnasium Tutoring Center with a large open area for students and waiting in the front. And then in the back, some offices, toilets, and a utility room. And the back portion of the building would be turned into a proposed laundromat with maximum occupancy of fourteen customers and two staff with a total of sixteen. Again, this unisex toilet, the utility room, and some washers and dryers and folding tables and benches in the front facing the side street. And that's about it, the rest of the restoration or the repairs will be just for cosmetics from the outside of the building, maybe we'll give it a fresh layer of paint or some stucco, we're opening up some storefronts, windows for the laundromat to bring in some lights. The front should stay the same, you know, we didn't change that. There's a side exit door that we kept as existing, we added another side exited door from the back of the Mathnasium and then an entry exit door for the laundromat. There was a rear exit door that's staying the same.
Mr. Ragad, there was some questions and concern about the sidewall there, the exterior being a long blank wall. And you could certainly come up with some design element to break that up a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Can work with the owners to do, you like to do some alterations?
Sure. No problem.
Wall that separates the two uses, what's that wall, what are you making that wall out of?
It's just gonna be a regular frame, either wood studs or metal studs with some fire rating because it's a separation of two businesses, so it has to be a fire-rated wall.
Just wondering, is it, if the machines are producing a lot of noise, will that be an impact on the learning and the other?
We will work with the client to, to introduce some sound abatement. So we will propose sound insulation in that wall and the layer of offices and toilets will also work as sort of an isolation buffer zone, so we can add another layer of sound insulation, you know, at the ceiling from the front of the offices and that should be sufficient to stop noise from coming through.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Members of the board? Nope. Mr. Holloway, any questions?
No.
Mr. Chapman? Members of the public have any questions of this witness? Hear none, seen none.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlback.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, it's yourself, you got?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name?
David Karlebach, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H.
And your testimony is planted?
Yes.
And your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
Qualified before this board or the boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn in, qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Carlback, you're familiar with the application that's before the board here this evening?
Yes, I am.
Had an opportunity to examine the local ordinances and master plan?
I have.
Wonder if you can give us your findings regarding the impacts of this application document?
Certainly. I'd like to describe a little bit about the site and the surrounding area and in doing so, I prepared an exhibit which I'm going to enter into evidence and pass around to the board.
Is that A1?
A1.
And what is it, just pictures of?
A1 is, has, consists of three pages, the first page is an aerial photograph of the site and the surrounding neighborhood and pages two and three are photographs, ground photographs of the, the site. So while it's being passed around, I will talk a little bit about the site and the surrounding land uses. The site is a corner lot, it's a intersection, North Beverwick Road and Longview Avenue, it's a rectangular lot measures forty feet wide by a hundred and ten feet deep, which is approximately point one acres. It's at the north end of the Lake Hiawaka CBU. And it contains a one-story concrete block building, the building has thirty-one hundred and twenty-four square feet of space. This was formerly a dance studio which had existed at this location for approximately twenty-five years on hold. It has been closed for the past few years. Uh, access to the site is from Longview Avenue, when I say access, I'm talking about access to a very limited parking area at the rear of the building, it's not a bona fide parking lot, it could accommodate two vehicles, which I would assume would be for future employee parking. In terms of the surrounding land uses, and I'll direct the board to look at the first page of the exhibit. It's predominantly retail stores, salons, restaurants, and offices within the central business district rate. One lot depth along North Beverwick Road. If you look just north of the site, you'll see Noel Gardens, that's an apartment complex which I believe is approximately eleven hundred units. Uh, and there's also other multifamily housing along North Beverwick Road in this neighborhood. Otherwise, we have single-family residential homes on the side streets within the R4 zone. Uh, the post office is located approximately one hundred and seventy feet to the south. Now, in terms of the proposed improvements, this is essentially an occupancy application. Twenty-two hundred ninety-three square feet of tutoring center and eight hundred and twenty-four square feet of spaces dedicated to the laundromat. There's no change in the building footprint, no change in the building area or impervious area. It's strictly a fit-up of the interior space for uses the laundromat and tutoring center. Uh, there is the additional door, I believe, two additional doors along the Longview Avenue frontage and new interior walls, of course, and signage. Now, this property is located in the B5 zone. Among the permitted uses in the zone are public or private nonprofit schools or other educational institutions approved by the state of New Jersey. So the Mathnasium would be a private for-profit education center, it's not approved by the state of New Jersey, nor does it have to be approved by the state, therefore, a use variance is required. Now, there's another applicable code section which is four thirty dash twelve, which says that no more than one principal use shall be permitted on the same lot. But then it gives other exceptions, provided that in the B zones, retail uses, restaurants, theaters, and other recreational uses we're permitted, shall be permitted on the same lot. So you have examples of where two uses can coexist on the same lot as a right. So let's just re, I guess, reexamine the variances that are required. D variance for having two commercial uses on the same property, a D variance for a for-profit private school. Uh, C variance permit two parking spaces where sixteen are required. And C variances from pre-existing non-conforming conditions, and those non-conforming conditions relate to the minimum front yard setback, eight point one feet exists and ten feet is required. That's the, I should say, that's on the North Beverwick Road frontage. Also, minimum front yard setback along Longview Avenue, zero feet exists where ten feet is required. Minimum rear yard setback where fourteen feet exists and fifteen feet is required. Minimum lot coverage, seventy-five point three percent exists and thirty-five percent is permitted. And minimum impervious coverage, ninety-eight point one percent exists and ninety percent is permitted. So again, those are all pre-existing non-conforming conditions, proposed to be continued but not worsened. Now, let's talk first about the positive criteria in support of the use variance application. Uh, the promotion, the public welfare is advanced because the site is particularly well-suited for the use. Now, this is particular suitability as it relates to the private school because the laundromat is, is permitted use. This site possesses all of the characteristics for the successful deployment of a tutoring facility. There's no change in the building footprint, uh, no change in the paved area required, no exterior building modifications with the exception of what was testified to earlier, adjusting up the storefront a little bit, additional signage, but that's about it. It's really an interior fit-up, it's ready fit for the proposed uses. And there are opportunities for drop-offs and pickups, on-street parking is available where necessary. And this has been tested by the prior use of a dance studio, which I believe functions in, in much the same way as, as this private Mathnasium school. Multiple uses on one lot, I should say, are contemplated by the ordinance, I just gave examples where they're permitted in the B zone. And it's just not permitted for these particular uses on the same lot. I'm gonna get into that a little bit later when we talk about the master plan. This application advances the purposes of the municipal land use law in the following manner, I'm going to read to you one of the purposes of zoning from the land use law. And that is to encourage land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. And here, as I said, there's no post-changes to the site, it replaces a vacant commercial space with an active use. It concentrates, concentrates development in an area of existing infrastructure and this precludes the need to develop or redevelop a vacant parcel, a new building, a new parking. It eliminates sprawl and it's certainly consistent with the principles of New Jersey smart look. Regarding the C variances, and I'll remind the board, the C variances are normally subsumed under the D variance, okay? We're talking, in other words, if the board approves the D variance and the, and the plans, they're also approving the C variances. But they should be cognizant of what they are, so here we have the parking variance, and I'm gonna present this as a C1 hardship variance. This site never had sufficient onsite, for onsite parking, nor is there any realistic opportunity to provide parking at this site. And I'm gonna cite this, a case of Rixick versus Bassender. And in that case, that's a nineteen ninety-one case, a variance from off-street parking requirements were granted as a C1 matter and the court upheld the grant of the variance because the applicant was rebuilding a restaurant on a pier which had been destroyed by fire and which never had onsite parking and could not physically provide it. So here we have the same hardship, there's no way to provide parking on this site. Even if you knocked down the building, you probably couldn't provide sufficient parking. So we're left with this building and as planners, what are we trying to do? We're trying to find an appropriate use for this building and one sitting vacant, we want to utilize it. And we only have two parking spaces onsite. And as was stated, the age of the students is five years to seventeen years old, so most, if not all, of these students are going to be dropped off at the site. And currently, about seventy-five percent of the students at the four fifty North Beverwick Road location are using the remote option and they're not going to the center, they're just using their computers. This severely scales back parking demand. There is sufficient on-street parking available on Beverwick Road and Longview Avenue to address any need for on-street parking. Parking is permitted on North Beverwick Road in front of the site except for two hours out of the week. So I think you have, you're limited to two hours parking during certain times. But as far as outright restrictions on parking, that's only two hours a week. There's also on-street parking available on Longview Avenue with no restrictions. Like many of the other merchants along North Beverwick without parking, this site relies on on-street parking. And two factors which result in the plentiful on-street parking are this, many area businesses have their own onsite parking areas. And two, in this area, there happen to be several underutilized and vacant buildings that do not contribute much in a way of parking demand. Regarding the setback variances, again, these are existing non-conforming conditions, proposed to be continued, the applicant is powerless to do anything to change these conditions short of demolishing the building. And these setbacks have existed at this location for decades. Now, I wanna talk about the negative criteria as it relates to all of the variances being sought. Number one, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. Again, this is strictly an occupancy application, only a change in tenants. Normally, when we talk about the negative criteria, we talk about what are the detriments that are caused by the proposal? I'm gonna suggest to the board, a detriment currently exists. You have a vacant, unproductive building and an area that's already home to several vacant and underutilized buildings. Vacant buildings are inherently bad for the general welfare. They contribute little in the way of ratables, jobs, and aesthetics, and long-term vacancies can lead to light. I noted several, I, I'm not gonna go through all the vacant, underutilized buildings, but I did make note of them. Also, this area is what I'm going to call home to part-time businesses, there are several salons that don't maintain full-time hours like appointment only. The psychic reader across the street is not what I would consider to be a full-time viable business, a marginal business. I don't believe there's any substantial neighborhood impacts, there's no excessive noise, vibration, odors, glare, dust, fumes, or any other nuisances. Visually, the site will remain as it is today, actually, it will be improved with the new storefront and the new signage. I heard a commitment on the, on the part of the applicant that he does want to dress up and improve the appearance of the building. There's no proposed modifications of lighting, utilities, drainage, only the additional building entrance. So really, we don't have a lot of site plan issues to contend with, they're already settled, so to speak, only the signage. There's no increased demand for municipal services as the building is already there. And although the tutoring facility doesn't rise to the level of inherently beneficial status, its value to the community is manifest. Regarding the two principal uses on one lot, this neighborhood is home to several small shopping classes with multiple tenants. Also, it has smaller lots that have two uses. And if you look on, I believe, page three of your exhibit. And if you look on, I believe, page three of your exhibit, I cite two of them. On the very top of page three, you have Zola's Auto Care and the Rent-A-Rack, both located on 151 North Beverwick Road. They're on the same lot. Abutting this property is the Tarasco Grill and the Dream Salon. That's at 137 North Beverwick Road. Two uses on one lot, abutting this site. And there are other uses that I noted. I should say, two uses in one building, two uses on one lot in the Lake Hiawatha area. So it's not a foreign concept in this neighborhood. And that is addressed in the 2020 master plan. I'm going to be getting to that. I don't believe there's any substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Simply put, public or private nonprofit schools are conditionally permitted in residential zones only. Public or private nonprofit schools or other educational institutions approved by the state of New Jersey are permitted in the B4 and B5 zones only. So maybe tutoring facilities aren't addressed specifically in the plan. If your planner looking at the ordinance, and you were asking yourself, where should they occur? What's the most logical location? If I'm looking at the ordinance, I'm going to tell you they belong in the B4, the B5 zone. Tutoring facilities share all of the same zoning characteristics as other schools or other educational facilities. The site easily accommodates both uses, just as the abutting restaurant and the hair salon accommodates both uses on one property. Now, the master plan, the 2020 master plan addresses the issue of multiple uses. And I'm just going to quote from the master plan. "Uses in business zones," and the recommendation is, "expand allowable uses, including provided for fitness and recreation classes, multiple permitted uses in one space, and entertainment-related uses." So again, recommendation in the plan. Regarding retail vacancies in Parsippany. The retail vacancy rate in Parsippany has climbed from 7.1% in 2013 to 15% in 2018. That's more than double the current vacancy rate in Morris County. And there have been past use variance applications that I'm aware of here in the Lake Hiawatha area for residential uses within your business zone. So, you know, in my mind, when you have a business use that's substantially compliant with the ordinance, attempting to locate in a business zone, it should be welcome. You know, of course, subject to some of the things we're talking about, parking restrictions, so on and so forth. So I'll just conclude by saying, this change of occupancy is not so significant as to alter the character of the area or damage the integrity of the zone. I know there was a question by board members about the adequacy of parking. And in this immediate neighborhood, if you go to the east side of North Beverwick, there's not a lot of parking on the main road because there's so many curb cuts. There's curb cuts along the browsers and the UPS store, so there's not a lot of available parking. But if you're on the west side of North Beverwick, in the area of this site, you have the Zola's Auto Repair and the Rent-A-Rack facility. That has onsite parking, and it also has quite a bit of full curb. So you can park, in my experience, there's plentiful parking right in front of Zola's throughout the day. And then the same thing goes with Basket of Cheer. It has its own parking lot, it has a long full-length curb, and there's parking generally available along Basket of Cheer. There's also parking along the side streets, as I said, on Longview Avenue. Long before you get to the, you know, the residential portion, you have about 100 feet of frontage on Longview where the site exists, where there's parking. And also along Anita Avenue, along Anita Ave, you have that vacant medical building. So there's really no parking being generated by that building. And I've noted there is parking available on Anita also during most times of the day. That's also across the street from the psychic reader. So all those areas, I think, provide enough parking. I think, what did we say, 14 parking spaces required outside of the two that exist onsite. And I think parking is sufficient. The other issue we talked about is whether or not, you know, this home should be home, this area should be home to another laundromat. And I think Mr. Chadwick would agree with me when I say, really can't be the role of government to limit the number of light uses that should exist on a block or within a community. Shouldn't really try to discourage competition. You should foster competition because competition is a good thing. What it usually does is it increases the, it increases the level of service. It increases or enhances the value of products. It generally lowers prices, and it's a good thing, it's not a bad thing.
And there's opportunity up to the north, there are multifamily uses to the north, as we've indicated, and smaller multifamily uses to the south and to the east, that a nice, clean, bright laundromat could be a benefit to maybe some of the people there looking for better alternatives in walking distance.
Right. I mean, anytime you build something that's shiny and new, it's going to attract people. And what falls down by the wayside, the businesses that are older, maybe they're more expensive. Maybe they have other issues, you know, maybe the management isn't friendly. Who knows, it could be anything. I know Parsippany is, what, over 50,000 people? I can tell you that my business used to be in Ridgewood, New Jersey. Ridgewood, New Jersey is less than half the size of Parsippany. It's about 25,000 people. Within the small village of Ridgewood, New Jersey, there's over 100 restaurants. Now, I know the town fathers would rather not have 104 restaurants. They would rather have a shoemaker and a candy store and a tobacco store.
You're never going to have that on North Beverwick Road. You're never going to have any of that.
It didn't turn out that way. But the point is, these restaurants are all there, they're all competing. And most of them are very successful.
That's right.
And they're viable, and it works. They're the ones that can afford the rents. The restaurants and the banks in Ridgewood can afford the rents in Ridgewood. And the small timers cannot. And that's probably the way Ridgewood evolved the way it did. But my point is, I don't think we should do anything to discourage competition. I think we should foster competition. And what's going to happen is, if there's a laundromat that's marginal, or maybe people aren't exactly happy with, but they go there anyway, that's going to fall by the wayside, and it's going to be something else next year. That's the dynamics of land planning.
Thank you, Mr. Carvack.
Mr. Carvack, I was speaking from a financial standpoint, and I was just trying to understand why this makes sense. When you compare Ridgewood to North Beverwick Road, it's like comparing a Bentley to a Yugo.
Come on. I'm not going to ask you.
Look, I lived there for 34 years and dealt with a lot of crap on Beverwick Road. And I'm happy, and I'm hoping that this works out because this will be an owner-operator. And that's something that you should bring out. If you knew any of the other owner-operators on Beverwick Road, they're the ones that take care of their properties. Absentee landlords on North Beverwick Road don't take care of their property. They don't. They don't. They don't care. They don't care. They're not getting enough rent to worry about. But if you take the Phil Santiago's and the funeral home, these are owner-operators. Their buildings are always very nicely looking. And I'm assuming that this applicant would hopefully be the same way. And you're never going to solve this, you're never going to solve the parking problems on Beverwick Road. You're never going to solve them. Unless you put a parking garage in. And you mentioned Zola's. I drove past Zola's today. That property got a variance some 25 years ago to put in rental trucks and an auto business. If you look at the original resolution, anything like what you see there today. Okay? As a matter of fact, I discussed, just you brought it up, and I went over and discussed it with Nora to have Jennifer go out there tomorrow and get that property under control. Because they're overflowing their parking lot, and they're parking where you want your applicant to be able to park. There was no street parking in front of Zola's today. It was car after car. So, oh yeah. Oh yeah.
I don't know the neighborhood, of course, as well as the board members, but it was my experience, various times that I visited this neighborhood, that in front of Zola's, in front of the liquor store, there's parking. And there is parking on the side streets. I mean, I didn't go through a detailed parking study.
There's parking in front of the American Legion, that whole strip up there. There's very, very seldom are there cars there. You've got a significant amount of space going south on North Beverwick Road, on the westbound side. Because there's not many, not a lot of businesses.
Mr. Chairman, to editorialize a little bit, we've done a lot of applications in my office up and down North Beverwick Road. And I'm going to insist that there is a lot of unlocked potential on North Beverwick Road if they can get that together. There's a lot of, there's a lot of potential there. With that concentration, you've got some great restaurants and businesses with a little backing and a little sprucing up, maybe some improvement, like this type of improvement. You could unlock that potential.
From your mouth to God's ears, because I fought for years hoping that there would be something better. You know? And I was one of the fortunate ones. I walked away and, you know, sold my property and did okay. But there's a lot of those properties that are, they're vacant. Landlords aren't getting rent, so they're not going to put any money back into it. And the town doesn't, you know, the town talks good game. They were going to narrow North Beverwick Road. I couldn't, I hope that's not going to go through. They're going to narrow a road that, when it's snow-covered, forget it. You can't get, you can't get through. God forbid you have the people walking in the street because they can't walk on the sidewalk because the landlords aren't shoveling the snow. Don't get me started, please.
I know there's a 2019 study. Rutgers University, I think, actually did a 2019 study just about North Beverwick Road.
God.
I'm sorry to say, I didn't have a chance to read the.
Oh, I would love to see that. Can you email me a, I would love to see that. So, all right. I've said all I'm going to say. Questions over here on the right.
Yep.
Questions on the left.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
How far is the resident behind your property? Like, there is a house I see. What's the distance of that house from this property? On the long view?
It's like right behind it, in case you're right there.
Yeah, I mean, it's directly, I can't tell you in feet. Let me see if I have a photograph of this.
Those are, those are small, tight houses. There's probably a lot of 40-by-hundreds along that.
I don't need to exit number. It seems it's pretty close. And the reason I asked is that there is going to be, what, nine or 10 dryers? And exhaust will come out of, probably from the top.
Right.
And, you know, that exhaust may go towards this house. I mean, is there anything special that, you know, the fire has to do something?
There's regulations that would prevent the noise from being excessive.
It's exhaust.
It's like a restaurant that's near a residential area.
Are you talking about the fumes?
Yeah.
And the lint and everything that goes with it.
Well, we would have to put in the resolution that they would have to remediate any excessive discharge.
They have to control it. Right, just like a restaurant, you know, along that North Beverwick would have to, you know, maintain its exhaust fans, and they're cooking all day, and they have, you know, same principle.
Yeah. Restaurants takes extra care of those things, but typically, Long Island, I'm not sure what they do.
Good question.
You referenced a lot of, a few times, people can park on Longview, there's sidewalks on Longview?
On Longview, I'd have to refer to my photographs, I'll tell you in just a minute. I think there's, in front of the site, there's definitely, there's definitely a sidewalk in front of the site.
Yep.
And then I.
But beyond that.
Beyond that, there may not be sidewalks, no.
So people will be expected to park on the street and walk their kids up to the mathnasium in the street? Essentially, it's either on the street.
Well, you know, the whole, the expectation, and by the way, I was correct in saying that. There are no sidewalks on Longview once you get northwest of the site. I'm looking at a photograph now. So they would either walk on the grassed area.
People's yards.
Well, no, within the right-of-way, not on private property. The grassed area within the right-of-way. Or, like you said, a lot of parents probably walk, they themselves would walk closer to the street, and they would have their child on the inside, and that's generally how it would work.
Assuming they're not pulling up up front and dropping off there, pulling up next to the building, which would be the preferred way to do it. Where are our sidewalks?
No.
Yeah, I have a, I think I do, I'm not sure, really. You talk about the fact that this was previously a dance studio, and there's a similarity between this use and that use as far as involving children, dropping cars, dropping off and picking them up. But, and also, the 10 questions about parking probably came up there. Do you have any idea how big the dance classes were as compared to the math classes?
No, I don't. I would imagine it would be very similar in that, you know, in certain cases, you would have one-on-one instruction. In other cases, you may have one dance instructor for every 10 students. I'm certain it varies, just like it would for the school. And I also, not only did I mention the dance studio, but I mentioned that, you know, educational facilities are permitted here. And I would imagine a tutoring facility would function very similarly to an elementary school. Difference is with, like a lot of nursery schools and elementary schools, you have a hard stop, hard start, and a hard stop time. You don't have this, you know, what would you call it, like transitioning from one class to the next to the next like we have here.
Well, I can see if there's a two o'clock class, and it's over at 3:00, and you've got a 3:00 class coming in, you're going to have cars dropping off and picking up. That could create some kind of problem.
That's exactly what they're planning on, right? That there's going to be ample room for people to drop off and pick up.
Since you have a door on the side, you think maybe having one door for drop-off and one door for pickup? You know?
Do you think that the operator would respond in some way if there were problems there with scheduling?
Well, yeah, right, exactly. I mean, they want to succeed here, so they're going to do everything they can to make sure that it's seamless. And if that means actually having somebody, you know, come outside and receive the children possibly and bring them in just to make it more efficient, but, you know.
And isn't having a laundromat in the same building just going to exacerbate the problems?
It's a rather, I mean, I look at the laundromat, it's rather smallish, you know. It's got 12 washers and 12 dryers. It's not a, it's not a big-scale laundromat.
Yeah, but the difference is, those cars are going to, if they are driving there, they're going to be parking there, occupying the drop-off and pickup spots that you guys are talking about.
Right. And I was kind of focusing my attention on how many parking spaces were needed, which would be 14 based on the ordinance requirements. And I, you know, my assessment was, yeah, there's, you know, there's 14 parking spaces available within walking distance of the site, you know, based on my assessment of the neighborhood.
But I think the owner, the gentleman gave testimony that there could be 14 people in the laundromat alone.
Well, I'm just saying with the.
There's 12.
I know, but that's, I think that's what he said.
It was 12 people and two employees, I think that was.
And those could be people that are walking to the laundromat from nearby.
Some will be walking, some won't, we know that.
Right. And that's.
I don't think anybody on this board is looking to find 14 parking spaces, right? That's not realistic. We're trying to ameliorate a problem before it begins. And the hard part is, like, I don't think anybody here knows what it was like with the dance studio and keep making these comparisons to the dance studio. We don't know what the parking problems were.
Actually, my daughter went there, and it was almost exactly what you would think. You know, dropping off was easier than picking up, right?
You hop out and you drive away.
Right. But when you're picking her up, it's a little bit of a pain in the neck. And if they're five minutes late, you get that double effect of people dropping off from the next class. But it worked there for 25 years.
And I do want to remind the board, as I said earlier, the other facility, 75% of the students are taking advantage of the, you know, doing it remotely.
That's now, that's now, that's not where we're heading.
Well, I don't know where we're heading, I don't know where we're.
I think the owner said that they would have a gap, maybe 15 minutes in between classes.
Right.
I think that we have to fill that in somehow.
So they could clear it out and then bring people back in.
Come here.
You have to come up here to talk?
Just go on up and use the mic.
Oh, sorry. So right now with the scheduling, we have like, I think it's like 15 minutes in between. So it's not like you have, say, 3:00, and then it ends at 4:00, and then 4:00 is the next clock, class, like session. So there is time in between. So, there is time in between so that for the parking issues, then-
Three o'clock.
Yeah, so you have time for like that fifteen minutes of like leave, like where they can drop off. There's time for other-
That's not what was told to us before.
No, I-
What's that?
I think she had testified, her, the husband didn't really know-
Okay.
About the, when she, when she testified.
It's, it's been a work in progress. Like, things have changed. We used to have no scheduling at all where it was more fluid and people drop off come at all times. But with COVID, we did start scheduling and we do plan to continue scheduling. But we do have time in between each session because we do like clean off and, you know, get everything ready for the next group of students that come in. So, it's not one after the another. So, you do have that time. And then also with drop off and pickup, there are two doors. So, that does help in, they're not all going to one door. So, you'll have to a different area.
Probably drop off from the front door and pick up on the side.
Yeah, and again, we do want this to be successful. I mean, our center is growing. We have a lot of kids and there's no way I would want to move to an area that's not going to succeed. So, we will figure out how to make it work. And we will try to, you know, like someone was saying, if we need someone outside to make it, like whatever it takes, we're going to make it work because we don't want it to be in an area that's where I'm going to start losing students and it's not going to be beneficial. Otherwise, we wouldn't have made the purchase.
Thank you.
Just thank you.
Any other questions? We're done? Any questions by members of the public? Hearing the scene, done? Any other witnesses?
Uh, that concludes our direct testimony.
You want to, um, you want to wait some?
Yes.
At this, at this point, I, I know there's two members of the public here. This is your opportunity if you want to make any comments. But you have to come up and be sworn in, okay?
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give the address?
Joseph Bronner. And what?
Where do you live, sir?
Twenty-six Celebr Road in Edison, New Jersey.
Would you, uh, your last name, what was that?
Bronner, B-R-O-N-N-E-R.
You may proceed.
Okay, so we own the building next door, one thirty-seven, North Beverlywood Road. And I'm trying, I came to hear also what, what was the trend for us. And the way I see it, first of all, the, the similarity between the dance studio and the matnasium-
Would you hold the microphone closer?
Hold the microphone closer so we can hear you.
The similarity between the dance studio and the matnasium is similarity in kind, but not in magnitude. The dance studio never had sixty or forty students in the, in the dance studio. So, the parking was totally different in magnitude. Now, we're talking, to me, it looks like it's overwhelming activity. Because what will happen, I try to imagine it. It's like a V-HI, no? Cars come, cars go, cars come, cars go. It would be nonstop between three and eight. So, that's one thing. Now, I am, I own a building for maybe fifteen years and I lived with the dance studio and I have no problem. But I heard testimony that there is plenty of parking on North Beverlywood Road. The way I see it, there is no parking. As it is, it's overloaded. And it's, yes, we want to have more businesses. It will also help us if there is a successful business next door, of course, because the, the businesses in my building are the restaurant and the hair salon. However, you don't want to choke the businesses that you have in order to bring new business. Now, having parking by the liquor store does not help. You will not drop off students at by the liquor store. So, what happens if some other people park already here by the building? Then you cannot drop, you cannot, you have to double park, I don't know. Especially in the winter, the, the street will be blocked. So, the way I see it, eh, this is going to choke the area. This corner is very small. I mean, we're talking, you know, big, this is thirty foot length, the whole corner. So, you're talking, in this thirty foot, you have parking for the matnasium, for the eleven or probably more than eleven employees in the matnasium and other two employees in the laundromat and plus forty students. So, it just doesn't work. So, I don't know how you see it, but to me, it seems that it will interfere, at least in my business.
Do you operate either of the two businesses?
No.
You're a landlord.
I'm a landlord.
You live in Parsippany?
No.
Where do you live?
In Edison.
And how much time do you spend on Beverlywood Road?
Hello, we, we, at least one-
So, how, how do you know how many students there were in the, in the Mary Lou Hales?
Oh, I saw them.
They told you?
I saw them. I saw the people coming and going.
But you never did a head count? You never talked to, um, the daughter of Mary Lou Hales' daughter?
No, because there was no problem, no.
There was no problem, okay. So, you don't know. You don't know how many students she had.
I don't know.
Because I got, because I got to believe you. I, I remember going past there. My, my daughter went when, much, many, many years ago when she was down the street. But, uh, I, I don't know if, I don't think you're qualified to give us a count because A, you're, you're, you're not operating a business there. B, you did not speak to the, to the owner of the property, okay? And, um-
Well, I heard testimony right here.
That, that, that's fine, but you're, but you have no facts.
Okay.
Show me, show me something on paper or show me something that says what I'm testifying to is, is true.
I see-
You can tell me they had six kids, they had two kids.
I just heard that everybody here said they don't know the operations. Nobody here, everybody that I have talking about the dance studio says, I don't know how many students they have. And my estimate is-
You don't, you just said you do not know how many students they had.
No.
You do not know, okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions of the citizens? Mr. O'Neill, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have a question to him?
No.
Okay, then just stay loose. Do you wish to testify?
I just want to make one comment.
Well, you have to stand up and get sworn in.
Ma'am, uh, could you please state your name for the record?
Deborah Bronner.
And you're, again, Edison, New Jersey?
Yes.
Thank you, you're sworn.
Um, my only comment is, dance studio, comparison, math, matnasium, I also don't have a head count. But we're talking an additional business with additional employees and additional people with the laundromat, which is above and beyond what the dance studio was.
It's a permitted use?
That's my only, my only comment.
They, they could, they could put a laundromat in there tomorrow without a, without a variance.
Right, no, but I'm saying the two businesses combined, we're, we're expanding-
I understand.
What was the comparison, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Well, contrary to some of the representations made, we think the comparison- I think the comments are over, sir, I'm sorry. Comparison to the dance studio is a like operation as to what we're proposing here. And it's also similar to something that's going on up and down North Beverlywood Road and every other storefront. Everybody wants there to be successful businesses. We want people going to these businesses, the restaurants, the hair salons. We want everybody going into these businesses. Parking is always going to be a challenge there. Everyone's going to be scrambling for parking on the street. It's going to ebb and it's going to flow. But we think that the history of North Beverlywood Road has shown that this type of use can survive and flourish in these, this building, both of these uses. We have buildings up and down of similar size with multiple uses in them. They're working fine. We think this is going to work fine, too. I think we should just trust the history. We can't prove a negative that there's problems, not problems, with what happened in the past. But the board's familiar with North Beverlywood Road. The board's familiar with the operations of North Beverlywood Road. We think this is in kind and we hope the board approves it.
Case complete, seven entry portion of his presentation. Motion to go into conference. I hope you guys will stay a few more minutes.
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
Thank you. All, any discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Volunteer. Come on, let's move it along.
Uh, it, it's a toughie for me. I think I'm going to be voting yes because it isn't a new, um, project per se. You have, I think Mr. O'Neill is right. I think there is this ongoing issue with parking on, on the road. We want it to be successful because they're not rezoning the old road. There was a kind of similar business there. I've experienced it myself. It was a little bit of a pain in the neck, but it did work out. And we want businesses to do well. I'm not sure you need a laundromat, but that's not my problem, that is. Uh, the matnasium seems like a great idea and, and I think I'm going to be voting for it.
Mr. Ready?
Yeah, me too. It is a good development, especially the whole, North Beverlywood Road need to be improved. And owners in themselves, they are going to stay there and I hope they are going to improve the property. My only concern was like, uh, parking issue, but North Beverlywood is as usual, you know, like a previous business, uh, similar to the previous one. So, only thing is, between the classes, there should be fifteen minutes. I don't think is enough, but if it is like a half an hour, that would be, because there are thirty, forty people coming in and going out. And that, that, that's my suggestion, but I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Paree?
Yeah, um, the main, main issue I had was the parking, too. And, uh, you know, nobody's going to be able to solve the problem of a parking that exists. But every business is accommodated, you know, they had enough parking. People find it, nobody goes back home saying, there's no parking on Beverlywood Road and I, I'll eat somewhere else or some other restaurant or something. So, I think, uh, it's not that intense. People do find the parking, it just, it may take a little while. And as applicants said, they will work on it as far as scheduling is concerned and we'll make it work. Because it's in their best interest, too, to make sure there is enough parking for the parents coming in to drop off the kids. So, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
I think by approving this, we are taking a bad parking situation and making it worse. However, I, I don't have a solution to that. And I, I don't think we, anybody here has a solution to that. I, I'm not comfortable, I don't like, like the fact that, that- We, we've all heard enough parking and traffic testimony in our years on the board that we know this is not great. It's not even good and it's problematic. But I, I'm, I'm willing to roll the dice on that. And, and I, I love the use. I don't care about the laundromat. I, I do agree with Mr. Paree. We've got to put something in there to protect those residents from the, the fumes that come out of there. I, I'm going to reluctantly vote yes. I, I wish the business the best of luck, but I think we are exacerbating a problem that we know exists.
The parking, uh, obviously was one of my main concerns and also, uh, having a laundromat that close to residential property. But, uh, it wouldn't be the only one. There are regulations to hopefully, uh, cover that. And no matter what kind of a business went in there, uh, now or in the future, there's always going to be a parking problem in Beverlywood Road. So, I'm going to be voting in favor of the application. I'm going to encourage the applicants to make sure that they make friends with their neighbors. I was, I was on Beverlywood Road for thirty-four years. I have more friends on Beverlywood Road than anywhere, okay? Good people, for the most part, restaurants, whatever, they're good people. And I want you to try and self-control the parking. If you see things getting out of hand, talk to the parents, all right? And, um, I mean, I encourage everyone, you're going to, you're a businessman on Beverlywood Road. You're going to own your own building. Beverlywood Road needs parking spaces. They need the lines drawn so that people don't pa, pa, park haphazardly. I have tried with the last three mayors. Mimi Letts didn't like lines. She took one of the few pieces of, of, of land on Beverlywood Road and made, made a park for junkies to hang out at night instead of making parking. I have now heard that they're going to tear down Lake Hiawatha Library and build it across the street in the municipal lot. This is not the way North Beverlywood Road has to go. We have to, we have to wake up. We have to be able to provide where, and, you know, in, in cases like, um, the liquor store down the street, you know, if the town went to the liquor store and say, hey, can you open up, you've got excessive amount of parking that you don't use. Can you open that up and allow us to rent spaces from you? So, there's some pu, public parking down there. Because the restaurant next door to you, if he, he can, nobody could park there. If he would be able to walk down, the people would be able to walk down a half a block and park their cars there in that lot, that's not so bad. Have you ever tried eating in Montclair on a Saturday night? Forget it. Forget it. You can't, you're from, you're from, well, you said, you said, what was it? Uh, Ridgewood, okay? So, we're not going to solve it and I understand landlords' issues. And, um, I'm asking you guys to make sure that you talk, you know, and, and be proactive on that block. We need more people. We need more owner operators that are going to take care of the property like I mentioned before. And I took a lot of pride in my property for thirty-four years and, you know, it wasn't until I retired that I didn't need it anymore, so I sold it. Otherwise, I'd probably still be here. Anyway, enough said, I'm going to vote in favor. Motion to come out of conference?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And Mr. Kaplan, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Hundred percent?
A hundred percent, I agree with your comments. Do you want him to, you want us to vote for him to, to draft the resolution?
I think so because we want to make sure we get that condition about the dryers correct.
The dryers, the operation-
Operational hours and the- Architectural breakdowns.
Yes, if they're going to do something. You know, you could, you could paint that wall like with a nice, um, school scene, a mural.
And sconces. Making a project for the kids to figure out the area and what the ratios have to be.
I don't think we're going to agree to that.
So, motion, motion to authorize Mr., um-
King.
King, thank you. To draft a resolution and, and review it with Mr. O'Neill with regard to approving this and including all the items that were just mentioned.
No move.
Thank you. Second?
Second, ready.
Okay, any discussion? Nora, Paul, the role.
Burkeley?
Yes.
Jasko?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Paree?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.[1770.09]